Board Member Joe Byrne to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman, almost.
Okay. Tonight's first case is ZBA 2022-30 KM R2 Realty LLC for 80 South Street. Come on up. And just for the record, if you could state your name, please.
Yes, good evening. I'm Tony Molina, one of the members and owners of the project.
Thank you. Okay. If you could just... For the record, you're just here for final review, we anticipate?
Yes, correct. We're here for final review and proposing, you know, COC final, closed out of the project.
Thank you, thank you. And I believe that at the last meeting, all the conditions were discussed and had been satisfied. Except for... You were just waiting for a certificate of occupancy, correct?
Correct, yes.
And at this point, have you had a chance to meet with the building commissioner?
Yes, so we just recently closed out all the mechanicals and building permits. The only item that we discussed last time and we actually is the one item that we want to discuss this evening is the sidewalk. We already have the contracting company that will be doing the work and they, I believe, they already filed with... Filed for permits to replace all the sidewalk and reset all the blue... Bluestone on the sidewalks. That's the only item we couldn't do in the winter. Besides that, I believe we are in compliance with all the requested items, so.
Great, thank you, thank you. Just for, before we turn it over to the board for any questions, is there any member of the audience here tonight that has any questions regarding this review? Great, for the record, there is none. Is there anybody remote that has any questions? And, Mr. Commissioner, do you have any questions or comments regarding this?
So, the applicant did apply this afternoon at 3:00 in the afternoon for his certificate of occupancy. He is requesting an inspection. Inspector Morielli was out today. But I flagged for Inspector Morielli when he does his final inspection to let me know if the provisions of the special permit have been met, specifically the preservation of historical architectural features such as restoring the entryway, carpet ceilings, oak stairways, oak floors throughout. Once he gets confirmation of that, gives us confirmation of that, then I believe that's the only remaining special permit condition that... That I had any questions about. And then we'll be able to progress through issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Going to just turn it on to the board for questions, comments, the straws?
No questions. Only comment is, I think you've done a really great job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Byrne?
I think it's absolutely beautiful, beautiful. We... Mike and I have seen it many times and I passed it today. Great job, really great.
Thank you, really valued the good feedback. We put a lot of good effort towards and good put forward and I'm glad you guys are happy and we are happy that we got a good support from the city on our first project, so.
You're welcome to do many more, if you do them the same way as you did that one.
Thank you.
Absolutely fantastic work.
Very happy to hear that, thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
No questions, outstanding job, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Talbott?
No questions, but just like everybody else said, great job. I've seen the pictures online, looks amazing.
Thank you, thank you very much. We are... I value the good feedback and the recognizing the good efforts, so.
Just one question.
Sure, yes.
There is an enormous tree that looks like it's almost down. Will that be completed?
It's on the agenda. At some point, we want to, yes, that big stump, yes. We've got to get a crane out there at some point.
Okay, do you have a timeframe on that?
I would say within six months, hoping sooner.
Okay. But that will be done, right?
Yes, yes, we'll grind it down, yes.
Okay. Likewise, magnificent job. It's, I think, everybody that's had a chance to see it, view it, go through it is, you know, pretty proud of, you know, what you've done to the property. I mean, really, it's... I think it's above and beyond what we expected, so.
We very much value the opportunity to allow us to, you know, take in the project and all the process have been very smooth and we have had a very great relationship from everyone in the town, very professional and I think it's a, for us, is very inviting for future projects, so we hope to do some more coming up, so.
Well, we appreciate your investment in the city. I think everybody on this board can say say for that as we've worked through the project and we encourage you to explore more projects in Fitchburg.
Thank you, we certainly will, so.
Great. I guess I'll ask for a motion. Does anybody have any concerns with the conditions? I mean, I think the expectation is that the... If this is approved, the review is approved, that maybe a condition that the, you know, anything that's pending with the building department is completed. Does that make sense? And that it's timeline on the tree, six months or something, right, to remove that?
Why is it going to take six months?
Probably we'll do it sooner. I just don't want to overpromise anything, but it's something that we can do a lot faster, probably, so.
Do you have a preference?
Given a timeline, I'll make sure we meet it.
Well, from everything else that they've done, it's fantastic.
It's so complete, right?
And it's been completed, but six months to cut down a tree because the stump is a little bit too much.
I think exaggerate. We can make that happen, like.
How about making it two months?
You consider that done?
Is the board okay with that?
Yes.
All right, if I could have a motion, please, to approve the review?
I make a motion that ZBA 2022-30 be completed and after receiving the go-ahead from the building commissioner on the historical effects, to be granted a certificate of occupancy.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate everything.
Oh, no, thank you all. I really appreciate the professionalism and all, you know, allowing us to do such a... Giving us the opportunity, appreciate that.
Hope to see you again soon.
Thank you, and please, anytime you want to come by, place is open for you guys anytime, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next case is ZBA 2022-33. Christopher Cordio for a special permit review for 109 Oak Hill Road.
Excuse me. How you doing, guys?
Good, ladies and gentlemen.
How are you?
Just one second, while I...
No, no problem.
Gather my, um... Thoughts here. Oh, I forgot to read something. I might as well read that now, right?
Sure, why not?
Station break. I guess it's, "Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. The board asks that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and a city of residence. At this time, board asks that all electronic devices be placed into the silent mode. And finally, we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, identify yourself by name and address, and identify the agenda item on which you would like to speak, which we're typically at that point, and then you may speak for no more than two minutes, so. Commercial is over, folks, we're going to resume the meeting. Okay, so tonight, we're here to review special permit to operate a restaurant under 181 313 for 109 Oak Hill Road. There were a handful of conditions with regards to this project. So I'm going to ask the applicant if he has the list?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I'm going to kind of go through them and you can tell us where you're at?
Yeah, absolutely.
At this point, if I may?
Yep.
Okay, so, um... The first one is paving and landscaping plan to be reviewed with onsite visit and a review at the April meeting and a vegetative screening to be provided between parking and the roadway, with a plan to be provided to the board at least seven days prior to the site visit.
I'm still working on that with Bill. Everything slowed down a little bit with the winter months and the economy dropping a little bit on us, so I had to get a few other projects completed in order to get this project back going again, so. Bill and I are working on that landscaping box that we had talked about and the, when he gets that, we can reschedule a walkthrough of the property for the landscaping and the repaving because we're going to repave it right before we open, just because we're going to have trucks on and off doing all the work. We don't want to ruin the pavement prior to the opening, once we pay all that money to have it repaved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
B, the permit holder is to schedule a site visit to review the paving and landscaping plan approximately one week. That was kind of folded into A, so you answered that. So now I'm just going to go through the conditions, okay? Parking and structure to be constructed according to a plan submitted dated December 12, 2022.
Correct.
Okay. Hours of operation, 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week, subject to reduction or modifications by the License Commission. I guess just real quick, have you been to the License Commission?
No, I haven't even started that process yet. I spoke with Town Hall the other day just to make sure there were still plenty of restaurant licenses available and they said there are, so.
Okay, great. Any conditions imposed by the License Commission are incorporated and become part of the special permit. Don't have to address that at this point because we know you've been there. Parking area to be paved and striped adequate to meet the needs of the employees, customers, and to handicap parking spaces to be constructed and occupancy not to exceed 150. So I guess you're still a ways away.
Yeah, so where we are right now is we're doing, we did the front half of the roof on Thursday. The back half's getting done tomorrow. It was a 44-square roof, so it was quite large. They couldn't get it all done in a day, so. We have hired a sprinkler company and they are in the process of doing the drawings so we can submit them to the building department so they can get that done. That's our big thing to do, pretty much before we can do anything else. Once those sprinklers are in place, we get our wire and our plumbing done, final construction, then, you know, my goal is over the next two months to get the exterior sited so then it will start showing that the property is coming along so people can start feeling good about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, at this point, is there any member of the audience that has any questions regarding this particular application? Okay, is there anybody virtually that has any questions? Mr. Commissioner, do you have any input, feedback, questions, concerns?
Not, not as of right now. He does have a building permit for the work. I was just looking through the plans. We have not had any inspections.
Okay. Yes. Okay. That answered that question, right? Okay. So I guess I'm going to turn it over to the board for questions. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. Just in driving by recently, seems like there's a lot of action where basically to my unprofessional eye, it looks like storage outside. Is all that related to the property or is it...
Correct, the dumps you see out front with the cover on it, that's getting dumped tomorrow. That was from being filled, but we got to cover it every night because we've had an issue with people, obviously illegally dumping in there, so every night we cover it, but that, we dump them once they're full to maximize the, you know, the payment at the dump, obviously, so. The truck, the flipping out truck belongs to us as well and that container is storage from stuff that was in the building, just so it's not a blight outside. And it's, obviously, we've been having issues with the neighborhood cars in the parking lot, so that we've been trying to address as well. Some guy had one, had some jack on the one the other day, so we've been trying to put an end to that, too, so.
Okay, and I guess the other question would be, you know, how long do you think it would take to bring back? How much time would you ask us for to bring back that vegetation, the paving and landscaping?
I think Bill should probably have it done in the next month. He's overwhelmed right now with work, too. He's getting inundated with work because he's local and he's reasonable, so probably two months.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Byrne?
Chris, when do you plan on opening? How long is it going to be?
We were shooting for August, but we did get pushed back a little bit with these winter months, so I'm shooting no later than October, I'm hoping, but I'm paying for everything out of pocket, so there's no big loan backing this up, so. You know, I pay for all this stuff, so when I'm done, I don't have this big, you know, bank loan that I have to pay every month so I can ensure that I'm open for years to come, so. You know, it's, it's definitely a little bit more trying, doing it that way, but I don't know anybody on the backside, you know?
So by Labor Day, we can be looking at something that's almost completed?
That's what I'm hoping for, correct.
So you would like to have a date in September to come before us again?
Yeah, that'd be good, yep.
Think that's okay, Mike? I'll go around.
Sure.
Get everybody's feedback and then I'll make a comment with regards to the next review myself.
Go.
Anything else, though?
Nope, that's fine.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Cordio, there was an onsite visit scheduled, or supposedly scheduled for April, which we were not able to do. What would we be looking at timeframe for that visit now?
We can do one beginning of May if you guys would like. Come on in, we'll do a walkthrough, show you what we're looking, what we're doing.
Before the next meeting?
Yeah, before the next meeting, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Mr. Talbott?
No questions at this time.
Thanks. Great point, great point. With regards to the review, the review is supposed to be before this meeting?
Correct.
So if we're going to extend it, you said two months?
Yeah.
So will you be prepared if we do May 14th?
Yeah, we can do May 14th.
Because we need a site visit before then?
Yeah, we can do May 14th.
And we have to schedule it so that the board members go in groups? We can't have a quorum?
Yeah, correct.
So I know you had said two months earlier. I just, what I don't want to do is schedule a review for next month and then we got to kick the can down and load it again.
I'm with you.
You know, if you need till June, we do June.
Yep, I mean, we're going to be where we're going to be anyway, so I'd like to have you guys walk through it anyways and just see what we are doing and our layout and stuff, so.
Okay.
You know?
But I'm talking specifically the requests that we were supposed to have for tonight?
Correct. I think we should probably do June because I don't know, with Bill, he's been kind of hit or miss lately, so. You call him, he goes, "I'll get it done for you," but then there's always a little bit of a delay, so. Maybe we should do June, just for that drawing?
Okay.
You know, just to be safe.
Okay. And you'll be prepared for us, right?
Yep. Always prepared.
Or you like to think you are?
At least so. In my mind, I am.
Did you have the conditions tonight?
No, so good point.
So basically, what we'd like is, at some point as we get closer, maybe if you could reach out to Mercedes?
Yeah, absolutely.
And she will kind of coordinate us all and keep us all together and
Perfect.
In line and we'll come up for a site visit in probably two different groups. We could most likely do it the same day, but if not, she'll handle everything with you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make it work, no matter what we get to do. Yep.
Great. Any other questions, comments of the board or the commissioner?
I'm also.
Great, if I could have a motion and...
What's the date in June?
It would be June 11th.
Motion to continue ZBA 2022-33 until the meeting on June 11th.
Great, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, the next case before us is ZBA 23-31 for Lauren Nario, properties 285 River Street. And for the record, Mr. Gallagher will be recusing himself from this case.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so just give me one second.
Sure.
Okay, so. Okay, so tonight, we're here for a review of the special permit that was granted. And... If you want to just kind of tell us a little bit about where you're at, what you've done and, you know, the progress regarding the project?
Yeah, absolutely. We made a lot of, a lot of progress with the building. The parking lot was obviously, you know, kind of a site, it was messy. It had a lot of debris and stuff like that, so we did manage to clean that up. We also did replace the side door to the building that was, it was in bad shape, so we did replace that as well. And that got painted, taken care of. We did fix some of the siding that had come off the building. Today, I had the inspection for occupancy, so we did pass the occupancy permit inspection and I'm still in the progress, in the process of working on the dealer's paperwork through the state, so I have another inspection that I'm still waiting on through them. But everything else has pretty much been taken care of and we're just waiting for the state now. And this, this review.
Great, great.
It's been a lot, it's been a lot. And we've already, we were broken into already. Yeah, so that was, that was a bummer. The door that we replaced, we had just replaced it and then somebody broke in and stole a few things and so we had to replace the door again. It's been interesting getting going, but we're really hoping that, you know, within the next four to eight weeks, we'll have the state come in and do their inspection for the dealership and hopefully then we can try to start making money out of the building. That'd be great.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. It's, it's, it is what it is, you know?
Yeah.
So luckily, at that point, we didn't have too many things in the building for them to steal, so there was like a scooter that we were holding on to for the landlord that was in the bay and they managed to open up the garage door and take that and, you know, but we, I would say that we probably lucked out because we didn't have the building full of stuff yet. You know, we didn't have a bunch of tools or accessories and computers in there yet. So it's, but it's definitely been an uphill battle, but we're getting there.
Thank you. So anybody in the audience has any questions regarding this permit or any comments? Great. Mr. Commissioner, any questions, comments?
Just to confirm that I did issue the certificate of occupancy on this building earlier today. Inspector Sullivan did the inspection, I believe, earlier today as well and that was all processed and issued earlier this morning.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody virtual that would like to speak regarding this case? Raise your hand, please. Okay, none. I'm going to turn it over to the board. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. Just in reviewing the conditions, part of it talks about things being picked up and I did have the chance to drive by and just to share, my view is, it does look very tidy. So that was an exterior comment and I trust that the inside is going just the way you want it to go. In terms of just, just operation, just as a general question, I didn't really observe much signage down there. Do you have some plans for that?
As far as the sign is concerned, we have a sign up there right now. But there were concerns throughout the winter that if they tried to put any type of, like, stickers on, like the laminated stickers, I guess, that they wouldn't stick to the awning because it was too cold out. So we decided to go with the banner that's up there right now. And then, you know, obviously, once we do start displaying cars, it's going to look more alive. There's going to be more, it's not going to be as much of an eyesore because there's going to be cars out there on display. And the cars have, you know, the year on them and stickers on the vehicle that we have to have on them. So I think that that's kind of going to liven up the outside and make it look more like it's a business. But for the time being, until I can start making money out of the building, I just, I didn't want to put decals on, on that awning until I have some kind of way of, you know, getting some kind of a return out of it because it's been a, it's been a struggle. But we did, you know, we did take a lot of time to paint the interior and make sure that, you know, simple things like the floors were clean and, you know, so we did make a lot of cosmetic changes on the inside that make it look much better. But as far as the signage, I think we're going to wait a little while before we do too much more.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Byrne?
I was at the property today and it looks very good compared to what it used to look like.
Thank you.
Question for the commissioner. Sir?
Yes.
When your inspector goes out to look at the property, does he go with this in hand, with the conditions in hand to make sure that the conditions that we placed on the applicant are complied with?
Typically not, but I check it before I issue the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, thank you.
He did, he did say today that he reviewed everything because he said that he saw that we had the zoning appeal and all of that stuff, so he did say that he looked at all of our conditions. But I don't know if that's something that they're supposed to do or not, but he did mention that to me today. He said that he saw our appeal and that there were certain conditions on the building, but I don't, he didn't say specifically what, but he did mention that to me.
You're welcome, Mr. Byrne.
Ah, what a guy.
Rob?
I've also driven by. It looks, looks great compared to what it used to.
Thank you, thank you.
Great. Yes, it does. And the inside looks very nice.
Did you see the pictures?
Yeah, couple of questions. Have you applied for the auto sales through the city?
Yep, yep, I got, I got the dealer's license through the city.
Okay, great.
Now, I'm just waiting on the state portion of that, so that's...
Okay, great. Are you going to stripe the parking lot?
We are. Again, that was, that was weather permitting. We are. Again, that was, that was weather permitting, and we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna go forward and put the striping on the, the parking lot until everything was kind of taken care of and until we could push it off, until we had some, some steady weather that we could put the lines on and make sure that it would dry properly.
Last weekend wasn't a good day for it.
No, no. We have, we've missed out on a few good days, but then you've got a rainy day the next day, and we just don't wanna have to keep repeating it, so.
Right. And then, um, the intent is to have auto repairs, auto body, and auto sales, right?
Yep.
I'm sure you're still kind of working through the process with, you know, auto body requires ventilation and auto repairs may be something else, but, um...
As far as repairs...
Still gonna take some time on that, right?
Yeah, yeah. As far as like the auto body portion of things, that's going to take time. Again, because, you know, pouring a lot of money into the building at this point isn't, it's not feasible until I can start making
Yeah.
money out of the location. So, that's kind of gonna take a backseat for a few months at least until I can actually get in there and start trying to sell vehicles out of there.
Gotcha.
Once I can do that, I can kind of proceed with, with the body shop licensing and all of that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, I'm gonna take, take you through the conditions, not all of them, because only some are pertinent to kind of today.
Okay.
And then you can just speak briefly to them, okay? Number two is the, the petitioner is to complete removal of any junk scrap or unoperated vehicles or parts within 30 days and provide proof in the form of pictures sent to the building department. Everything's cleaned up?
It's, it's all cleaned up.
Great. Um, number three, no exterior storage of motor vehicles, parts, or supplies, and a maximum of eight vehicles displayed for sale. Um, you're not there yet, so...
No, but we don't have excess vehicles, and we don't have unregistered vehicles over there. We don't have any vehicles.
Right, that's good.
It's not a problem right now.
Um, no junk or unoperated vehicle storage outside with the term junk or unoperable, meaning vehicles that are unregistered, expired inspections, unless they are held for sale for no more than 60 days. Again, we're not there yet, right?
Yeah.
And petitioner shall operate in compliance with the January 14th plot plan. That's from 2020. Um, we've had so many plot plans submitted, I think, that, um, we use the, the older versions. Showing snow removal in line parking spaces for vehicles. I guess I, my recommendation at this point would be you still need to kind of get things going, and maybe a review in six months. That gives you some time to kind of get up and operating.
Sure.
Does that work for the board or any other feedback?
This month, six months is good.
Six months work?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that would put us at October 8th, and, um, if there, if I could have a motion, that would be great.
Motion, uh, under ZBA 22-31, uh, to continue the review of the special permit until October 8th.
And approve?
Second.
And approve the review, right?
Yes.
And approve the review.
Yeah.
And approve the review.
Okay, second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, everybody. We really appreciate your help with all of this.
We appreciate your investment in the city.
Have a nice evening.
You too. Next case, ZBA 2024-4, Stephen Senney, 1030 Ashby State Road.
There's one before that, Mr. Chair, 2023-15.
Oh, I'm sorry, jumping ahead. Anticipated an early night. Mr. Senney, I apologize. You could sit tight for a little longer. So, this is ZBA 2023-15 for Nadell Antonio for the property 348 Elm Speed, Elm Street, and, um, this is a review of the special permit. And, Mr. Antonio, you are here virtually?
Good evening. That is correct.
Great. Okay, if you would be so kind, um, maybe to give us an update on the status of the project?
Correct. So, um, we demoed the building. Yesterday, I got the permit approved to start making the cap. If you can give me like a month, I can have that cap. Or if I can see you by the June 11th meeting, that'll be all cap and ready to rock and roll.
Okay. That's it? Pretty short and sweet tonight?
That's it. Um, I did notice that number on the, um, on the request. I think number four says I have till July 31st of this year. So, I wanna make sure that if I do move it to a June 11th, I still have time to get the okay to continue the building. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any member of the audience here tonight that has any questions regarding this case? None. Is there anybody virtually that has any questions or comments regarding this case? Please raise your hand. Okay. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the board. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you. I went by, and things may have changed very recently, but when I had gone by several days ago, it seemed like, as I was facing the property, on, on the right-hand side, there was a, um, perhaps concrete wall that went along the right-hand side of the property. Is, is that still up?
That is correct. That wall is staying. Whatever you, whatever we have now up is staying. We're building on that.
Okay. And just for, I guess, from my education, that wall is considered part of the foundation?
Um, it sits on the foundation. You can say it's part of the foundation. That is correct. Yeah, it's all concrete. It's all part of the foundation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
We've gone round and round about the safety fence around the outside and having the, uh, sides of it opened. And, uh, as I went by today, was back to that situation again where there's plenty of opportunity for kids to get into the property and hurt themselves. I wish that, uh, that would be taken care of. Again, we mentioned it. That it be closed off and screened properly, not the way it is now. It's wide open now.
I could put more fence around it. That's no problem.
Well, that's what you said the last time. And it's still the same way.
Um, last time, the building was up, so it was actually being closed off with the building before it was demoed.
Well, next time, next time you appear before us, I don't wanna hear any more excuses. I'd like to get it taken care of. I live in the neighborhood, and I pass it daily, so I'd like to see it done.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you. When do you anticipate the, uh, cap for the foundation to be completed?
So, um, like I said, I got the permit approved yesterday. I should have that framed out in a month. To be safe, I can say from the June 11th meeting, that'll be great. When is the next meeting? On May? Is it on the...
May 14th.
15? I mean, we could probably do that to be safe. If we could do the May 14th, I should have that cap.
So, before the May 14th meeting is what you're saying, sir?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and just another question. There seems to be, um, an appliance out front. Looks like a water heater or something like that. Actually, it looks like a new unit. Is that gonna be part of what you're doing, or did someone actually leave it there for you?
No, that, that was it. Yeah, someone left it. We're not gonna use it.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, sorry. Sorry somebody did that to you. Yeah, okay. No more questions.
A gift from the neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Talbot?
No questions at this time.
Great. Okay, um... Antonio, just, Nadell, I'm sorry.
Same thing, no worries.
Yeah, just to, I just wanna, you know, mention that I think your intent, you know, we haven't approved any plan for this site, right? And I know you had mentioned in the past that you, you maybe had an intent to try to use some of the foundation for some new construction. And the board has given you a timeline to cap the existing, I don't know if I wanna call it a foundation, because it's really bits and pieces. You know, some of it is structural, um, and a lot of it upgrade. But, you know, we're asking you to cap it more for safety reasons. It's not really anything that I would want you to anticipate is, you know, for future construction. And, you know, I just wanna make sure, before you go too far down the road, that I think there's still a lot of pieces of the puzzle. Um, the, the, the board has to approve whatever it is that you plan on doing on the site. But also, I think the building commissioner or building department is gonna be, you know, involved also to be able to make a determination as to whether whatever is left on the site is even usable, you know? So, that might be a conversation you wanna have with the building department at some point, maybe not too far down the road?
Okay. Yeah, so if I'm not mistaken, I've submitted plans and all the information needed to proceed on, on, which is if you, if, what I can see here from the permit that I applied was to reinstate, vacant abandoned non-conforming mixed use, which I applied for this before. I just wasn't ready, and unfortunately, the building collapsed, and then that's when I had to demo the building and wanted to cap the foundation.
Sure.
Um, but I can def, but I can definitely make sure that we, I mean, you should have all the information for my intentions of what I wanna do. I, I do plan, I can't just go there and cap the foundation. I can't go there and just start framing and capping, and then inspector walk, drive by, and then I'd get in trouble. This is why we're going through the building department, getting a permit to be able to cap the foundation. Now, I'm not gonna cap it at one feet. I am gonna cap it at eight feet. That way, I do have that cap squared off, where when I do get the approval to move on, I already have it ready. I'm not going up anything, and he's gonna put a nice cap on it, so it's ready, it's ready.
Okay, again, I'm just, you know, want you to be clear that we haven't approved a design or a structure on the property yet.
That is correct. Do you have that information?
It was submitted way back when we started this process.
Because that would be great if, when I come back for May 14th, and you guys review the cap for us to hopefully move forward.
Okay. Well, I think there's still some missing pieces. Uh, Mr. Commissioner, do you have any question?
I'm just looking through the notes on OpenGov, and there's a note from Mercedes that there was a, a request for an extension until July 9th of 2024 for the overall project of, of, um, building a two-family house left and right, um, for that. So, there was no decision made because there was a mutual agreement to continue that discussion until July of this year.
That's correct. And that's what I'm, I want the applicant to understand. We haven't approved the actual design, and I know that the applicant has also purchased some land down the street to address parking, but we're still quite far away from any, any approval. I'm just trying to provide some helpful insight with regards to, you know, the foundation. I don't know if you've had a chance to visit the site?
I have looked at the site a few months ago. I haven't seen it recently. But we would require an evaluation of that foundation, those remaining portions from an engineer. I believe Mr. Antonio has already done that as part of this process to get the cap. But what he's calling cap is framing for the first, for the proposed first floor. And the design that was approved is, is ver, is using, um, Doug Fur Larch and LVLs to frame that, what he's calling the cap there. And those are designed for dry conditions, so gonna have to move kind of fast with the process and getting the design, and he's gonna have to get a designer that, that really knows the code and, and knows kind of how to get stuff turned around quickly, so that he can maintain the integrity of, of that, because these designs, Doug Fur is among the most expensive of the types of wood. You don't wanna let, leave that out in the elements too long. And with LVLs and such, really don't wanna leave that out for the elements for too long. So, it'll have to be quick.
Okay. So, maybe, you know, um... Take some time and come back next month, um, because we have to look at approving an overall design and a plan, which we haven't.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. If we could do May 14th, I can have that cap ready, and then hopefully we can move forward. I guess, I, like I said, I submitted all the information. I would, I will go, I will go back and make sure you have everything you need, in case you have any questions.
Okay. So, just so we understand, are you basically just saying that way back when you first applied for this, you had some conceptual plan? That's what's gonna be resubmitted?
That is correct. I gave you the plans showing the parking, showing the line, showing what we were doing, showing everything what we were doing. Unfortunately, what happened was that the building collapsed due to the snow. So, that took off some time, where we had to demo that building, unfortunately.
Okay. So, have you gone through the process with regards to the design of the two-family? Along with, um, trying to incorporate what remains of the concrete?
That is correct. So, the prints that we... Yes, the prints that we submitted showed what is staying and we being removed. So, that's what we removed. We removed what the engineer said to remove, and we left what he said what to leave.
Okay. All right, maybe we can convene, reconvene next month?
Perfect.
Does that work?
Please.
Thank you.
Mike, wasn't that...
Thank you.
Weren't those plans submitted prior to the new environmental laws being passed? With the...
I think so, yeah.
Different type of, uh, installation and, uh... We need, we need to get new plans. We, you know, we don't, we can't use those same plans.
We didn't approve the plan.
Well, we haven't got it. I haven't seen it.
I mean, that's my fault. I submitted everything when I submitted it. But if you want, I can have the engineer put a different date on it. It's actually looking for, but I mean, that's not my fault. I submitted everything.
Okay.
It should be brought again around the board.
Mr. Commissioner? So, just so that it's clear for, on the topic of what Mr. Byrne just said, the energy code is based on the date of the building permit application, not on the date of any ZBA clear interdetermination or any of that. It's the date of the building code application. And so, that has not been submitted for this project yet. So, you're gonna be, you're gonna be facing the stretch code, and July 1st, that stretch code becomes even more strenuous. and July 1st, that stretch code becomes even more stringent. So you really need to get this design in ASAP before, before the stretch code changes again.
No problem. What I'll do is I'll try my best to have that, um, to have the new plans on May 14, before May 14 meeting. So you guys have some time to check it out.
And Nadell, as you know, I'm happy to meet with you. Just let me know when you're gonna be around. Happy to meet with you so that we can try to, to talk it through, any ideas or anything you have.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm gonna bring the architect and the engineer. That way, I mean, you guys can talk and we make sure we're on the same page.
Is it gonna be the same one that did the cap?
Unfortunately, yes. I mean, if you need me to find somebody else, I can, but I already paid him for the job, unfortunately.
You can use whoever you want. But I haven't seen a project like this backing Doug Fur in quite some time.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they have, they have the licenses. I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so you want to push this out till July?
Well, I'm scared. So you guys gave me a deadline before July 31st, before this building collapsed. The old commissioner told me I should be offset. I wasn't gonna demo the building. It collapsed because of snow. And he told me it'll be okay if I demo it because I'll be able to build something there. I'm afraid for this to you guys say, you know what? You can't build nothing there. Knock it down and then I lose. So I don't want that to happen. So I don't want to wait till July 31st. Unless you can tell me that's not gonna happen. But like I said, when I bought the building, the building was sitting there, no problem. Unfortunately, it was a bad snow and it demo, it messed up the roof on the building, which it looked like it was collapsing, but was actually pretty strong. I was afraid to demo the building because I didn't want this to happen. I didn't want you guys to say, hey, you know what? It's been extra amount of time. I don't want you guys to build nothing. Yes, it is non-conforming. It is a tight spot, but I did buy land down the street to provide the parking. I think that, I mean, if you want to put it to July, I just don't want to, I don't want to July to come and say, hey, you know what? We've been coming to this over and over and over. We're not gonna approve this.
Mr. Commissioner.
I would prefer June.
I'm more concerned about the new stretch code. If it's kicked out until July, you're gonna, you're looking at a hers rating of in the 40s if you're gonna bring in any fossil fuels into that building. If you have
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I'm willing to do what I have to do. I just don't want to
Yeah, but that's gonna increase your costs dramatically. And I mean dramatically. So I think this sooner is, is somewhat better.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I appreciate that. And I'm gonna go back because I thought that I first pulled the building permit for, with those prints, but I'm gonna double check.
Yeah, you
Nadell, reach out to me tomorrow or
Okay.
Sometime this week. I'm in the office again on Friday. I
Perfect.
I strongly urge you to reach out.
Will do. Thank you.
And Nadell, I just, again, I'm gonna be pretty clear that you had some, you know, unforeseen circumstances with the property. And at the time, the board was willing to approve a special permit for a two-family with plans to be determined to allow you to keep kind of rolling. So again, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, you're cautious with regards to, I think your intent is to probably reuse all of the concrete structure that sits on the property. And I don't believe the board has approved a plan as of yet. We've just approved the willingness to allow a two-family structure. And then since then, you've also purchased the additional land, which we don't, I believe, have a parking plan for either. So, um, so do you want to move this out till, till next month? We can do that.
Was there a decision made on the approval of the two-family structure?
I believe so.
No.
But not on a, a, a plan?
No, we would, we would
I don't see a
Consider a two-family. But we didn't say that we were approving any plans. We didn't have any plans.
Okay.
And then the building went down and we had, and all the plans that were there were for
So we've just been continuing it?
Yeah, we didn't
It's not recorded?
No.
Okay, it's been
There's been no decision
Been going on for so long that
There's been no decision written.
No.
Okay.
And all the environmental codes haven't been met with those plans. So he, the client should get to be, get together with the building commissioner and put together some plans because right now we're, we're working on nothing.
Okay, so I think maybe at this point, let's, let's, let's go 30 days to, so they can have some conversation. And, um, and then we'll get you back in here and see if we can keep moving things along. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you so much. Would that be May 14?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, so if I could have a motion for continuance?
I make a motion that we continue case number 20, 2023-15 till May 14th, 2024.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm opposed.
Thank you, guys.
Wait a minute.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yep. Okay. So Thank you, Nadell.
Thank you, guys. Good day.
We'll see you on the 14th.
Right, good luck. Have a good day. Good night.
What would you rather? Again, we don't have a plan.
I know. Okay, next case is gonna be ZBA 2024-4. Mr. Stephen Senney for 1030 Ashby State Road. Commission, continuance for variance.
Is everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Well.
Doing well. Thank you for asking. Okay. So five members? Everybody was here last month?
Yes.
Chance to review the, the site?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Senney?
Yes, sir.
Please, um, maybe give us a quick recap on your application.
So first off, I just want to say thank you to the board for the help you provided to me to help me kind of understand what the requirements were for variance. I apologize for not being 100% up to speed at the last meeting for what the board needed to act on a variance request. So I want to thank you for it. It was helpful and much appreciated. Everybody gave great feedback and, and helped to me. I appreciate that. So I think I just want to go through kind of four major kind of criteria or area, areas I want to talk about. So the property is unique in the following ways with our, the site conditions with topography, the slope and the soil conditions. I think everybody went out there, you know, definitely can identify the topography that we had, the slope that we had. And soil conditions, ledge, if you want to kind of call ledge of soil, but that's, that's the gist of it. There, it's all over the property, which, you know, leads us to not be able to comply with zoning in those areas. We also have a communication easement that runs along the property, underground communication easement. And then we had, and that cuts the back part of our property in half, which doesn't allow us to use that as well. So the slope, topography and soils, you know, are really the, the big key hardships with the site. So I think like a literal enforcement of that, of trying to comply with that would create, you know, a couple of, couple of big hardships. One of them would just be the scale and scope of construction to try to conform with the zoning would, you know, provide a, pose a substantial hardship. The, um, a lot of different things. When we start blasting out ledge, you know, to the level that we would have to up there to, to make something happen, there's a lot of, a lot of different things we would have to consider. You know, the effects on groundwater and, you know, just the scope of what's going on. There's, you know, 1,000 yards or more of ledge, maybe 2,000 yards of ledge that would have to be removed. So and then, you know, on top of that, I guess the, just the scale of construction and then the financial hardship that it would cause, you know, to even begin construction, you know, by a literal enforcement of the zoning, zoning bylaws. The third thing would be that, you know, if the variance was granted, I, I don't believe that there's any detriment to the neighborhood. There, my nearest neighbor on that, that side of the property is, uh, 400 feet away. And along with that, we're 28 feet, on the left-hand side of the property, we're 28 feet from the property line. We then own another piece of property in between that's 50 feet wide. So even if the variance is granted and we split that other 50-foot piece in half, like in theory, we still have our 25-foot setback, you know, from a congestion kind of standpoint. Even if another house was to be built on the other lot beside us, there's still just that 50-foot strip of land between the two properties would provide the required setback, you know, that the zoning bylaws, you know, require. Um, and I, I think I would submit to you that, you know, granting a variance doesn't, doesn't go in the, doesn't go against the overall intent of, or the purpose of the bylaws. You know, it's a, it's a, it's definitely a difficult site, you know, for what we want to do. In the backyard, septic system in the backyard prevents us from doing anything behind the house. So I know everybody's been out there and love to answer any questions that you have and try to make some clarity of what I just said. Sorry.
No problem. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Okay, is any member of the audience here tonight have any questions regarding this particular application? Is there anybody virtual that has any questions regarding this application? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. Hey, Steve. Um, I think your, um, framework was pretty good, just to, just to say it. So kudos on your homework. That was good. In terms of, you said something that was very intriguing to me, which was about this second piece of property. So does that abut this property?
Yes, correct. Yeah, in, in total, we own about 60 acres of land, you know, up there. And part of it is the solar fields that are out in the back.
Sure.
So there is, to the left-hand side of our property, that, that parcel there, there is, at the street, there's like 175 feet of frontage on that parcel. And then it, then it pipe stems down to 50 feet. So left-hand side of our house, 28 feet's one property line, 50 feet over is another property line. So
And so we're here, um, because we're discussing dimensional variance, how close you are to
To the
first property line?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Which is how many feet?
Uh, 28 feet.
Twenty, and how many, how many feet do you need?
25.
I'm not, he he has 28 feet and he only needs 25?
No. He nee- he needs 25. He has 20.
He needs 25. He has 20.
Yeah, so just, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. So, um, 28 feet right now, side of the building to the property line is 28 feet. And the requirement is 25 feet. So we're looking to put a 16-foot addition on.
So, so, so after you put the 16-foot addition on, what's, you'd be less than 25 feet?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Now, at that less than 25 feet, if you kind of kept going beyond that, that boundary line, you're saying the next abutting property you also own?
Yes, sir.
And that's 50 feet wide?
Yes, sir.
So for
That's the access to the solar farm.
But does he own it?
Yes.
So for the purposes of zoning, aren't contiguous properties combined?
No, because they're both developed properties.
Because they're both developed properties. And I guess I ask you, Mr. Commissioner, so the 50 feet is access to the solar farm, which is in back?
So if he could grant an easement or if he could, because I believe that the conditions for that roadway required only what, 30 feet or so? If he could, if he could subdivide that roadway partially and grant himself that land, then we wouldn't be here today. We'd, we would, um, he would be allowed as a right to do this.
Understood. Okay, thank you for clearing that up. Just before we move on, just to check for understanding, did you understand what we were just talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't fully agree with it, but I understood what you're saying. Yes.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
I was out with Mr. Senney on his property at a site visit. And what he says about the topography and the soil condition is true. There's nothing but boulders and ledge out there on the far side of his house. So if he wanted to put the garage on the far side of his house, it would be a almost impossible task. He'd have to dynamite and everything else to get that side of the house even down to the level of the house because it's a hill and it goes up approximately 12 to 15 feet. The side of the house that he's talking about, it, to me, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect it wouldn't affect anything. Oh, I have no problems granting my variance on that particular side.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, sir. You currently have two garage spaces below your structure now and you're asking for, in this variance, for two more or one more?
Uh, one more.
One more?
Correct.
And what will you be storing in the garage?
My lawnmower?
Okay.
Shovels, rakes, that, that type of stuff.
So yard equipment?
Yeah, normal household stuff.
Okay.
And the, the, to kind of give a little context, so as my wife and I kind of discussed what the needs of our family were, she works from home and her job requires a certain amount of privacy, you know, with what she does. So the, the intent was the space for an office on the first floor. So that's, that's really what drove, you know, the, the space. And whatever space you build, you have to have a foundation under it.
Right.
And it just happened to match up with the other garage that we have there. So just to add a garage stall. So that's, that's the purpose for the garage underneath as opposed to just a
Okay.
Foundation, because there's a, a slope there as well.
Right.
That a, it just fits in with having another garage there.
Okay. Thanks for answering the question. No more questions, Mike.
Mr. Talbot?
I don't have any questions. Um, you've met all the criteria for the variance. So again, good job doing your homework.
Thank you. Mr. Senney, um, last time you were here, you mentioned you needed to store tractor?
No, I have, we just, I keep my own, I keep equipment up because we've got 60 acres of land. So we're out there all the time, you know, doing stuff, firewood.
Okay.
Heading out stuff, yeah.
Great. So you'll still have some access to get onto the left side of the new structure?
Yeah, so like I said, we still have that 50-foot, the 50-foot piece we own. So we have, you know, a nice, you know, grass access all the way to the back property.
Okay.
You know, for a couple of different areas, yeah.
Okay. Right.
And even if this was put on, we still would have, we would still have access around the side of the house, that additional 14 feet or whatever it would be.
When do you anticipate starting construction?
I anticipated it last year, but, but then I, but then I, then I forgot what I was doing. So the, uh, no, so once I, once I looked at the site plan, I realized we needed a variance. We started it last, the process last year.
Okay.
Um, I'd, I'd like to be, I'd like to be under construction this year on it. That's what I'd like to do.
Okay. Okay. So just so we have everything clear, you're asking for some relief of 16 feet, which is gonna give you a side setback reduction down to 12 feet?
Yep. And if we, if it Yep. And if we, if it makes sense to, I don't know if it's just a wording thing, but the, the addition will be sixteen feet wide. So, you know, it could be, you know, twelve feet, could be thirteen feet, because it, the lot does taper there a little bit.
Okay.
So, there could be a difference. I don't know if it's worth saying, you know, a sixteen-by-twenty-four addition.
Okay.
You know, and then, obviously, we'd provide a, an as-built plan.
Yeah, we need to look at setback.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If you end up making it a little smaller, that's okay, as long as you meet that minimum twelve-foot request. Okay? And that's the foundation. Any eaves or overhang or not?
Is there a way to word that any differently? I'd hate to, I'd hate to put a sixteen-foot, sixteen-foot addition out there and be eleven feet, six inches, because I did that once, and it, and I didn't...
Is this registered certified plot plan that you submitted?
Yes.
Okay. Did they come and survey?
Yes, they did. And, and so, and the reason is, so if you, if you look at it, the building and the property line, they're not parallel.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of a skew to them.
Sure.
So, the, the further back, at the back corner...
Yeah.
...of the addition, I can't a hundred percent guarantee that that's twelve feet. It could be eleven feet nine, could be twelve foot three.
Okay.
Does that make, does that kind of clear his mud up there?
So...
Sorry.
If you want to have, we need to accept the plan, and the plan doesn't show what that distance is? Is there one that's been amended?
I had twelve feet plus or minus on the one I sent in. So, I don't know how...
That's what I have here.
Yep. Yeah.
Mr. Commissioner, do you want to work off plus or minus? I'd like to have a certified plot plan that...
I've been trying to get rid of plus or minuses off of site plans since I got here, because these are supposed to be by a surveyor listing meets and bounds.
Certified.
That have to be very specific. So, if he's saying he's afraid of, if he wants to shoot for twelve feet, but he's afraid it might be eleven foot nine, then maybe he can amend his request to be eleven foot six to give himself the cushion.
And, so, or maybe we should have a certified plot plan that shows the true dimension?
Well, the pinning would be a best practice for him to do, but what he's saying is that this line isn't, that this line isn't long. So, he's letting us know in advance, he's not going to be able to meet that twelve-foot mark, because he, his dimensions of his garage are set. So, so he's not going to shorten his garage for that. So, he's, he's giving us a heads-up that, that...
Oh, I, I get he wants...
He wants the cushion.
Further relief, but my question is, nobody knows what that distance is.
Yep. So, if he's saying it'll be at most eleven-nine, maybe he wants to amend his request instead of twelve feet to be eleven foot six, to give himself that cushion that he needs. And that way, we don't have to come back here for a modification later, because, because the foundation person didn't put the foundation exactly where the pins set, which I've had happen.
Okay.
Me too.
So, so it may be worth him amending his request to buy himself that six-inch cushion if the board is, is interested in doing that, or he has to meet the twelve-foot mark, and if his garage is shorter, his garage is shorter.
Okay. So, let's play this out. Let's say it's eleven feet, but then the structure gets done, and it, it's different.
Well, his goal is twelve feet. His, his goal is to have a twelve-foot setback, but he's saying it might be eleven...
No, I get that whole piece of it. What I'm trying to get is, is back to what you had said. You, we're trying not to accept plus or minuses.
Yeah.
But we have a plan that we want to accept that doesn't give us a dimension.
But we can modify the plan and add that condition that, that twelve feet plus or minus is now eleven foot six.
Eleven feet. Eleven feet.
Or eleven feet.
If, from a, so from a construction standpoint, even, even if an engineer lays a, a building out on a, on a piece of land, it's simply just a line on a piece of paper. So, you, you shoot for what's on the plan, and when you get into the tolerances of inches, half a foot, it gets pretty difficult. And that's where we would pin a foundation. If we, if we were, if it was a new construction job, we would, well, except for the one time I didn't do it, you would pin the footings, and that would ensure that your foundation walls are within where you want them to be.
Okay. So, you'd like to modify your request?
Yes, sir.
For...
Eleven feet.
Eleven-foot reduction in setback. Check.
Oh, for a setback to be, setback, the twenty-five-foot setback requirement to be reduced down to eleven feet.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as far as a planned as submitted, you want to see that later?
No, that, that, we would make the modification on this submitted plan, that that twelve feet, that plus or minus twelve feet is changed to eleven feet.
Sure.
As a condition.
Yep.
That way, it's not as submitted, it's as modified.
Okay, but as submitted, it still does not show a dimension?
What do you mean? As submitted, it shows plus or minus twelve feet. In red lettering, it shows plus or minus twelve feet.
Maybe I'm looking at a different plan.
Yeah. His is, Steve's is different. Yeah, could we see yours? Yep.
All right. So, I'm going back to submitting.
You handwrote that onto a certified plot plan.
Correct.
You want us to accept that?
He's going to have to get us a foundation as built eventually. So, we could accept this. He has to pin it, he has to get us a foundation as built before we can issue an occupancy and...
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Senni, this is your original. We're going to let you keep that. Okay. Any other questions? All right, going to close, deliberate. Start with Mr. Reynolds.
I am, I, I've visited the site. I, I do believe the site meets the conditions for a variance, and I am amenable to the modification of a twenty-five-foot setback reduced to eleven feet.
Thank you. Mr. Byrne?
You know, I'm not very strong on issuing variances, but he meets the full criteria across the board, so I'm amenable to it.
Great. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I visited the site also, and I observed the topography and the soil, and I certainly can understand the hardship, and I'm in favor of it as well.
Wait, Mr. Talbot?
I have no objection to the variance.
Are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, if I could have a motion on ZBA twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four dash four.
Make a motion on ZBA twenty-four dash four to grant the dimensional variance with a modification of a twenty-five-foot setback reduced to eleven feet.
Great. Second?
Second.
Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Twenty-day appeal period. Things will get written up. You can file it, the decision, and it should be good to go.
Right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate your effort. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next case is ZBA twenty twenty-four dash three, Dallas Sabala, for a request to reinstate a vacant abandoned non-conforming three-family dwelling at the property three-seventy-six Clarendon Street. Good evening. And for the record, you are?
My name is Dallas Sabala.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of the property in question.
Great. If you could just tell us a little bit about your application, we would appreciate it.
We would like to keep the property as a three-family, like restated into a three-family. We bought a property that has parking space within the eight hundred feet. We currently have a surveyor did what they did on the property, just measure everything for parking. And before, there was four parking spaces, but the surveyor said it's only three that fits the space. The next property, the three thirteen property that we bought, has an extra lot, which we put into plan to accommodate parking for the three-seventy-six Clarendon Street.
Great. Okay, turn it over to the audience for any questions. Is there any member of the audience, if you could come up to the podium, please, and state your name and your address, and just tell us a little bit about why you're here and any questions you may have?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you for taking my comments. My name is Beverly Teft. I am the owner...
Sorry, Beverly?
Beverly Teft, T-E-F-F-T.
Thank you.
I reside and am the homeowner at Sixty LaGro Street, which directly abuts the property that Dallas is speaking about. I've been there for twenty-eight years, and I'm finally happy to see that maybe some movement is happening on this property, that it's maybe gaining some traction. It's been vacant for a really long time, and it's, it's really in need of a lot of repair. It's literally falling apart, and I'm, I'm concerned, because we have a neighborhood of, you know, well-established homes. We've all been there for a long time. And the longer that this property remains unfinished, the worse it gets every day. It's, it's really, pardon, I'm sorry, it's, it's really an eyesore, okay? Windows are falling out, the doors are open, the overgrown vegetation, and that's what I look at every morning when I get up and go outside in my home. I, I have spoken. She stopped by the house quite a while ago, and then I didn't hear anything, and we were wondering what was going on. So, my concern is that something really does need to be done, and I am hopeful that the board, whatever the decision is made, that it will be mindful of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. People take pride in their property. My concern, obviously, would be the parking, because it's, it's limited, and on-street parking is really not conducive, particularly in the wintertime. It really isn't for anybody's property, but particularly in that area, because there is a tenement on the other side as well. So, that's all I, that's all I had to say. I just, I trust that the right decision will be made, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for your input. I appreciate it. Anybody else? Any other member in the audience here with regards to this application? Okay. Like to go virtual. Is there anybody here? If you could raise your hand. Okay. None. Before we kick off, I'm just going to read responses from any of the departments. The Department of Community Development and Planning, comment, site approval, site plan approval will be required from the planning board if a special permit is acquired from the ZBA. Okay? Police and Traffic, no comment. And Fire Prevention says this building may require an automatic fire sprinkler system. Are you aware of that?
I thought about it. I wasn't sure that it actually needed, but if that needs to be done, I'm totally fine with it.
Okay. Great. So, I guess at this point, I can turn it over to the board. I do have a question from the Commissioner. There is the ability to move ahead with a three-family in this state or condition, if more than a fifty percent reno is done, is...
Yes, and I'm trying, yes, and I'm trying to figure out, because I remember we were having this discussion with the chair at one point, and the issue was, let me just pull it up to confirm, the... I wrote on January twenty-sixth, in speaking with the applicant, she's not planning any facade upgrades other than window replacement, so a special permit is required, because the requirement under the, the one that you're referring to says that we can revive it if the non-conforming structure, where the applicant rehabilitates the facade and at least fifty percent of the square footage of the structure, and the applicant was not, is not planning on rehabilitating the facade of the structure, according to my conversation with her on, on January twenty-sixth, that other than window replacement, she's not planning on any facade upgrades.
Is that true?
Yes.
That you're not going to renovate the exterior of the building?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to turn it over to the board. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. Just, it, it looks like it might need some updates on the outside. What's the thought process besides your, your, your thinking there?
Yeah, so we are looking to put more vegetation. I noticed there's some concrete on the sides, and we're trying to make that more, like, more green, more garden, and hopefully put some light on it too as well.
So, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I'm interpreting the facade as, as a multi-story building. You're talking about...
The siding.
Siding?
Siding.
Yeah. And so, what you're saying...
Asbestos siding.
Asbestos siding.
Asbestos on it now.
Okay. So, you, what you're saying is that for visual purposes, or that you want to shine some light on the side of the building? Do I understand that correctly?
I'm not sure. So, lighting is for, like, the parking space, so it's not dark at night.
Okay.
Yes. So, we're looking to put in more vegetation and to convert the side of the property to make it look better.
Understood. Okay. So, my question is not so much on, on the side of the building, it's, it's, meaning the, the ground. It's more about the side of the building where you're putting the windows in?
The siding of the house.
The siding of the house.
All the asbestos siding.
Um, I'm not sure what could be done. If we can paint it, and we can't remove anything since it's asbestos, or...
Asbestos can be removed.
No.
And can be covered over. It can.
Okay.
It's, it's done nearly every day.
I'm, I'm not asking you to figure something out right now. I'm just trying to understand what, what you're saying, because you were, you were very emphatic and quickly, no, we're not doing that. I was just trying to understand why you weren't doing that. And then I was, I would ask if you would look into that, that, that question. New question. Just, you mentioned parking, and there is some parking here, but I can't un, understand the parking, and I think I'm just a little slow tonight. Could you just explain the parking to me one more time, please?
Yes. When I bought the property, it was stating as a four parking space. However, we have a surveyor check everything, and he said that only three parking spaces meet the city requirements.
Okay.
So, that's why we bought a property close by, which has an extra lot. So that's why we bought a property close by, which has an extra lot and has enough, more than enough space for parking space that can accommodate the 376 parking spaces.
Okay. And in terms of the close by, I can see that there's the plans. Is it...
313 to 376.
It's from 313 to 376. So is it like half a block away?
Oh, no. You gotta go up there and find out. It's long.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
But it's less than the eight hundred foot. I think it's eight hundred feet.
You sure? Have you measured it?
I believe Chantel and Planning has verified-
You believe what?
I believe Chantel and Planning has verified that. But I have some concerns about the parking lease agreement that was submitted.
Well, I do too.
Okay. All right. That's, I understand. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Byrne?
May I call you Dallas? May I call you Dallas?
Yes.
Dallas. When did you buy this property?
It was like a year and a half ago.
Because I see that your application for appearing before this board was dated August of last year. I went by the property today, and I want to say, to be polite, it's sort of like a pigsty. I have never, it's just absolutely abhorrent that you have owned that property for that long and have not done anything with it. You haven't cleaned it up. You have done absolutely nothing with the property. The front door is wide open. It's not safeguarded whatsoever. And I just want to say that it's terrible that you come from Drakehead to Pittsburgh and you want us to do you a favor of giving you a, an opportunity to run, to take care of this property, and you don't do anything to even clean it up. It's, I mean, I don't know what you think our city is. I'm just absolutely appalled by it. It's an upset on that particular project. Something has to be done this week on that property. It has to be cleaned this week. The trash, the bottles, the overgrowth, it's absolutely terrible. There's no reason for that whatsoever. I mean, cleaning it, cleaning around the house is nothing more than bending over and picking stuff up. And it, you know, you've had it for over a year and a half and haven't done anything with it. It's just terrible that you treat our city that way. That's enough said there. Now, let's go back to this parking. I have been to 313 Clarendon Street to look at that property. Now, I've looked at your plan, and I was very, very much, I don't know. It's, to me, it's a lot longer than eight hundred feet, but the Commissioner said somebody checked it. I don't know. And the parking is off of Beacon Street? Bacon Street?
Yes.
So it's not even on the same block. It's around the corner from where you're, where the property is actually located on Clarendon Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have to go back, I have to say that I have to go back and review this again because when I looked at the property, I didn't see that it was the back of the property that is marked off for the property, for parking, so... I have to look at that again. I yield. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes. Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Dallas.
Good evening.
I have a question. How many total parking places will you have, considering the three that you currently have on the site and the additional lot that we're talking about within eight hundred feet? How many parking places will that provide?
In three Clarendon Street, we have nine.
Oh, you have nine?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of the exterior of the building, we've discussed that it's asbestos. Is the plan to paint that?
There's no plan to paint or any plan to change the outside of the property. Not at the moment, no.
Not at the moment? Okay. Okay. And in terms of the roof, is the roof, is it actively leaking or is it pretty good?
The roof will have to be changed.
Roof will have to be changed. Okay. And it looks like three bedrooms per unit? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah? Okay. Thank you. No further questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Talbot?
Where is 376 Clarendon Street in relation to this on the plan?
There should be another page submitted.
Doesn't really show the distance, though, between the parking lot and the house. Is it...
Has that dimension been confirmed?
The planning confirmed, correct?
Apologies. Can you repeat that question?
Do you know if somebody confirmed what the distance was between?
Yes. Yes.
Do you know what that is?
It is like six hundred and, I'm not, I don't have the exact amount.
It's okay. You can throw a dart at the wall.
But I checked.
Okay.
It's-
Around six hundred-ish?
Yes.
Okay. Which is under that eight hundred prescribed, so... That kind of gives you two football fields, maybe?
Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Just have some questions. What I'm a little concerned about is, is kind of reality, right? Six hundred feet for me to park and walk is quite a long distance. You know, once winter happens and all that, I really think that it's just nature of people, right? We're going to park in front of the house on the street. It's going to happen, right? That's reality. So what I was wondering, and you know, and based on some comments from the board, is did you or would you be able to look at some additional parking on-site? Because it looks like you have some more room to maybe get it up to four cars?
Yes.
Something like that?
We, before, we thought it was four because we saw the space, and we didn't understand, well, we're not expert on the measurements, so we were told only three, but we did believe we can fit four in there.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner?
I just wanted to give a little food for thought for Ms. Zabala that you kind of alluded to, if you can indulge me for a minute?
Sure.
You alluded to at the beginning of this hearing, and just to put it a little more bluntly, you're here for a special permit for the, to reinstate and abandon three-family use. The Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance gives you the ability to reinstate that three-family use, that three-family abandoned use without needing this special permit, just as of right, if you show you have enough parking, if you commit to rehabbing at least fifty percent of the gross square footage of the building, plus the facade of the building. So the reason we're here is because you don't plan to upgrade the facade of the building. What happens is, even though the zoning ordinance, as of right, says you're allowed to have eight hundred feet between the house and your parking spots, and you have six hundred feet, this board may reduce that number as a condition of the special permit, potentially, if they so choose. So it may be worth reconsidering updating the siding of the building to upgrade the facade and work with my office and maybe ask this board for a continuance for a month so that maybe we can work together, so that maybe you can withdraw, be able to withdraw the special permit and move forward with your project. That's going to include us having a strong talk about the parking space lease agreement because there are some concerns I have with that. But as long as we can get that to meet the zoning ordinance's requirements, we may be able to move forward without having to go for a site plan review or a special permit. But that requires you working with us to meet those provisions of the zoning ordinance that allow you to do that.
Okay.
So it may be worth asking this board for a continuance, knowing what the members are saying and talking about with their concerns about parking proximity.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you. Just to say it back one more, one more time, because I think a lot of people talking with you is a lot of people talking at you, so sometimes it's kind of tough to be in that seat, right? So sometimes I think, I'm just going to say it in my words, sometimes I think of this as kind of like a little bit of a game, right? There's some rules. And so just to say it one more time, and I appreciate it that you, how you phrased it, is that the reason that we're here tonight, the reason that you're, the reason that you're being forced to come here tonight as you play this game, so to speak, is purely because of your choice of the facade. So if you made a different choice about the facade, then you're not in front of this board. You're down a different path. I just want you to just to be, to understand. You can still choose to, you know, continue to play it this way or you could play it another way. That's up to you. It's just very important to understand the options.
Thank you for explaining that. If I have to change the facade to keep the property as a three-family and restated again, I'm up to it. Yes.
So if I was, I'm just going to think out loud now for a moment. So some of the choices that you might have is to press forward tonight. Another choice you might have is to stop tonight. And another choice that you might have is kind of in the middle, which is maybe ask us for a continuance to give you some time to explore an option that would allow you to just, to see what all your options are. Just so you're not, just so you're fully aware, which is my goal for, just thinking out loud with you for a minute.
Just so that, to make sure I understand. English is not my first language, so I try to understand all. If I have to apply for something different just to change the facade of the property and do everything that needs to be done by law and by the city codes, I will do.
So that's one avenue. If you keep going down this avenue, what you risk is that we may ask you to do other things too, that you're-
Then I will like to hold then.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I do not want to put words in the applicant's mouth, but I would thank you for giving me a moment of your time.
Thank you. So Dallas-
Wait, wait a minute.
Really what it does-
Wait a minute.
Is it- Hold on. No. Just let me finish, please. What it does is it gives you two options, okay? We would give you the ability to ask for a continuance tonight?
Okay.
Right? For thirty days, for sixty days, for ninety days, okay?
Okay.
And that would give you the opportunity to kind of hold this with us, right? And then it would give you some time to meet with the building department, okay? And explore the other option that is out there, okay? Where, and if I have this correct, Mr. Commissioner, it's going to require a fifty percent renovation of the gross-
Of the building, which they told, which her partner told me they were planning on doing.
Right. And based on our visit to the property, right? Looking at the exterior, looking at the porches, you know, perception of electrical plumbing and the fact that there are walls that have been taken down, you're probably going to be there.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So we're giving you another option and want you to understand it and be able to ask questions tonight. Okay? Make sense?
Yes.
Okay. I think that, you know, one of the board members did express pretty strongly, and I think everybody feels that way, is that if you own a property, you should at least be able to keep it neat and tidy, even though it is not, you know, operable. I know that if I lived next door, I would be kind of a little dissatisfied with, you know, how the exterior is. So maybe you could address that-
Yes.
-pretty quickly for us?
Yes.
The board member may even have a timeline that he would express.
I did.
One week, this week.
Excuse me?
I was told to do it this week, right?
I would like, that would be absolutely wonderful. And I think your neighborhood would appreciate it also. I didn't, I didn't mean to break so bad on you. It's just that it's tough for me, who is so invested in Pittsburgh, to have somebody from the outside come in and treat our community with disrespect. I just don't like that at all. So you are going to be coming in here, bringing a three-family online. The three-family has three-bedroom apartments. You are probably going to be renting to people that have family. We are going to have to educate the children in those families, and I use a very small number. I use a number like seven thousand dollars per child, and you're going to have three families moving in there with children. You will probably be paying no more than three thousand dollars for taxes, and we will be picking up the tab for all these children. So the least you can do is clean up the property. And I'd like that done within the first, within this week. You've owned the property for a long period of time, and it would just show some respect to the community. Okay?
It will be done.
No? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Commissioner and the board, I just, Attorney Tree had just made a comment with regards to this specific case, and it pertains to the parking, okay? And that is that a drafted lease should be amended to state that it runs with the land on both parcels and binds any successors in title, and a notice of lease needs to be recorded at the registry. And I think what she's looking at is so there's some, if this is approved and there is some alternative parking, that there's some permanency to it, you know, for future property owners. So- Existing property owners.
So yes, this would actually stem from conversations she and I have been having.
Okay.
The chairwoman and I have been having where I voiced concerns about how do we actually enforce this eight hundred foot when someone rents to someone else? And looking at this lease, even though the lease says that it's up until 2089, it doesn't say anything about successors in title. It doesn't actually inure the future owners to follow this lease. So that's why I think, and that's what I was saying, I have issues with this parking space lease agreement that we're going to need to work out because I think something needs to go in the chain of title for both properties to document that. So that's exactly what I was referring to.
Any other questions or comments on the board?
I do not have any questions, but I do wish the applicant good luck on the project and the renovation. We'll show a lot of luck with it.
Thanks.
So just before I, would you like to continue this to have a chance to explore the other option with the building commissioner?
If there is another option, yes. I would like to hold it so that we can see. I'm not sure, one month, two months, whichever. It's good.
We could do, I'm going to need to sign a mutual agreement, which just says we're kind of- kind of extending the time we have to work on this?
Okay.
Okay.
Which is...
Is 30 days sufficient for you, or do you want to do 60 days?
What's the first one?
30 days?
30 days, yeah.
Okay. If you have a moment. Let's see. Okay, do you have a moment to maybe come up and sign this?
Yes.
And it just states that we mutually agree to suspend the time for all hearing deadlines, including constructive grant for the next meeting, okay? And however you find is convenient.
They'll be right here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Do you need anything else from me?
No, just in the event that, after you speak to the commissioner, if you decide you still want to proceed with the board for the special permit, try to take a look at additional parking on site, because I think that would be helpful, okay?
Okay.
And I think that's it. If I could have a motion, any other color?
I make a motion.
We're almost done.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion on CBA 24-3, to be continued until May 14th.
14th, 2024.
And that the property be cleaned up within a week, from today's date.
Okay. Second? Second, Reynolds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You also.
Thank you.
Okay. Next case is CBA 2024-9, Amico Realty LLC, for the property at 5963 Wayland Street. This is a variance under 181.313.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have an easel to set up, if you would permit me just about 60 seconds, have an easel to set up, if that's okay?
Sure, please take your time.
Good evening.
Evening. Actually, you know what I may do is take a five-minute recess? Madam Chair should be here any minute, and if anybody needs to take a moment.
I like your style.
No.
That's okay, I have...
In case we needed three. I think three is the official signal. So, good evening, everybody. I'm Christine Tree. I am the chair, who was very thankful for, to my vice chair, Mr. McLaughlin, for keeping the meeting going, as well as Ms. Mata and all the rest of the board members until my arrival. I understand that we have come to 5963 Wayland Street on the agenda, so I am going to call CBA 24-9, Amico Realty LLC, 5963 Wayland Street. This is a variance under Section 181.313 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to erect an accessory 3,000-square-foot storage space on the same lot not connected to the existing building pursuant to Section 181.93 located in the neighborhood business district. And gentlemen, welcome to the meeting. Could you each please give me your name and city of residential business?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Greg Roy with Dulles &amp; Roy, and I, our place of business is in Lunenburg, and I am representing the applicant this evening, who is present.
Good evening, I'm Mike Amico. I'm representing myself with, for Amico Realty and Amico Flooring. Greg is obviously the civil engineer, he's the brains of the operation, so.
Very good.
For better or worse.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll give you a brief presentation. I know it's been a little bit of a long evening, so I appreciate your time this evening. As you stated, we are here this evening requesting a variance from Section 131, 313, excuse me, I think I had dyslexia. And I wanted to start off with a little bit of history on the property, because I think it is apropos, if you will, to the variance matter before you. In 2012, the applicant requested approval from the city, I believe through the site plan approval process with the planning board, for the construction of approximately a 6,000 square-foot addition at the site. And I have that plan up here in front of you on the easel here, so that you can get a feel for what was proposed and what was approved back at that time. The existing structure today is shown here on the plan in brown, and the approved addition at that time, again, that was 6,000 square feet approximately, was, is shown in red. And it was attached to the building. It included two floors, it had 6,000 square feet on the upper level, which had access on the Wayland Street side of the property, along with some storage in the amount of 3,100 and change square feet proposed on the lower level of the property, which has access off of the South Street side of the property. Subsequent to that approval, the applicant proceeded along the lines of having that built, and determined that the cost to install that addition on the property was going to be significant. And the cost was directly related to the presence, to the topography of the site, and to the soils on the site. The soils in the vicinity of the red portion that we're showing are very ledgy, there's a lot of ledge in that area. You may be familiar with driving up Wayland Street, you can see some of the ledge that exists on that portion of the city. And there's also quite a slope that exists from the upper level of the terrace down to Wayland Street, and it just became cost prohibitive and really burdensome for the applicant to construct that project based on those site constraints.
And Mr. Roy, could you just inform us what was the nature of the prior approval?
Sure, it was site plan approval, and it was for retail space on the first floor and storage space on the lower floor.
So you were not required to obtain a special permit?
I do not believe it needed a special permit or variance at that time. So it was more or less a by right approval, but it was a site plan approval nonetheless. And I wanted to put that in the record in this case, because the applicant, because for one reason, you asked in your application, right? Has there been any other approvals on the property? And this one certainly exists in the record. But I think that it relates directly to the variance request this evening, and I want to flip the board over here so I can show you what we're proposing. So the building, as I pointed out before, remains unchanged, it's the brown, the portion that we have highlighted in brown, that's the existing building. It is in itself a two-story building, retail space on the top floor, which is on the Wayland Street side, and storage space underneath, on the lower level, which is utilized by the applicant. The applicant would still like to get the additional storage component of the previously approved 2012 project, which included 3,100 square feet of storage and an additional 6,000 and change square feet of retail space on the top floor. They just are looking to do it without the 6,000 square feet of retail space, and they would like to do it in a detached manner, not attached to the existing building. So they are proposing a secondary building on the property, which is shown in red, which is a 50-foot by 60-foot building, would be a single-story building. It would have access from the existing parking area, which is right in here, would be access in this proposed shaded area. And it would provide the additional storage in the amount of 3,000 square feet that the applicant was intending to build back 12 years ago. Due to the cost, again, as I said, directly related to the ledge that's present and the topography that's present, that is the reason why we're here requesting, daring to request a variance to this portion of the bylaw, which revolves around the fact that this would be considered accessory because it's in a detached building. So that was the reason why I wanted to put the, wanted to sort of bring to your attention the previous approval, that in virtue of the fact that it was attached before, the applicant had approval for this, a very similar use that was, that were being proposed today, it's just that now we're proposing it in a detached configuration to the site.
So there's been no change in the zoning ordinance that has required the request for the use variance? It is only the detachment?
That's a great question. I don't know. I know that you've had changes to your neighborhood business regulations recently, and downtown business regulations. I believe, I did have a conversation with the building commissioner, and I'm keenly aware, he's sitting right there, and can comment, we had a conversation on this today. I believe that should that old approval be proposed today, we may need a special permit for the use from your board. But it would be a special permit, so it would be allowed by special permit, it wouldn't require variance from your board if it were to be attached. So I can't stand here and say that there's been no change to the regulations, I believe there may have been, but...
And the retail use that is currently going on in the brown building is a conforming use, correct?
To my knowledge, it is, yes.
Okay, it's not a pre-existing non-conforming use, and there's no dimensional non-conformity that you're requesting relief from?
There's definitely no dimensional non-conformity I'm requesting. To be quite honest with you, I do not believe, I believe retail is allowed as a right, am I correct in that?
I believe that is correct.
Yeah, I think the retail portion is.
Okay, thank you.
And that, I wanted to be brief, I'm sure that you folks have some questions, and perhaps some questions from the audience, so I'll yield. Thank you.
Okay. Just a quick question, could you review the parking with us, both the requirement and the dimensional compliance on the number and size of spaces?
Yeah. I'm going to hold it, because I can't see it otherwise. So we have, I have to refresh my memory here. The parking is shown on Sheet C3 at the top of the page, if you have it in front of you. We have a building classification of mini warehouse distribution. Required parking for your zoning is one space per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. We're proposing 3,000 square feet of additional, which will require three additional spaces, and we're proposing, actually, an additional four spaces in the front of the building, so we would comply with that. We are before the planning board as well, we filed a joint application with the planning board for this, for site plan approval, we do realize we would need that as well to satisfy. And they do, they have asked us for some additional information on the parking as part of that process as well, to look at the parking on a site-wide macroscopic level, which we do intend to address at that process, too.
And the four additional spaces, as I'm looking at the front of the new building, is one, two, three, the fourth is an accessible space?
Correct.
And the space marked 18 is not a parking space, right?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to be sure on that one. All right. What is your projected timeline, once permitting is completed, to construction of the project?
We'd like to soon start, obviously sooner rather than later, but our objective is to start this summer on construction.
Okay, how long do you think construction will take once started?
Yeah, for a project like this, excuse me, we're hoping somewhere in the proximity of four to five months.
Okay.
Like to get it done before the end of the year.
Have you engaged a contractor to, all right, and do you have funding secured to complete the project?
We do, yes.
Okay. All right, at this point in time, I'm going to open this up to any members of the public, and then after that, we'll go around to board member questions. Is there any member of the public who wished to speak on, for, or against this petition? Do we have anybody online, Ms. Mata?
We have two.
Okay, is anybody raising, if you would like to speak on this petition, please raise your hand? Okay. We did have a couple of department comments that I'm going to read. Fortunately, now I have to switch glasses between... This is from Community Development and Planning, and that is just noting that they're on the planning board agenda for March 26th, that was the prior meeting. From the Board of Health, no concerns from the Health Department. And from our good Chief Martino, no concerns from FPD. All right.
Madam Chair, if I could, the planning board did open and continue the meeting, so we are on the agenda for the 27th, I think it is, April, the April meeting, so just wanted to make everybody aware for the, those who are interested.
And I'm just going to warn you, Mr. Roy, we haven't gone through the variance criteria questions, so you can address those now or after board member questions.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, Madam Chair, I did present, I did give you a narrative on those, so I'm happy to do that now or later, however you wish.
Saying it out loud helps the public...
Okay, I will do that now, though. And I will, I'll probably just stick to the script, it's getting late, so that'll probably keep me more concise. There are four variance criteria, and we have, and I will read the criteria, and then I'll read our response. Criteria one, what circumstances there are, it's asking for a description, what circumstances there are relating, which relate to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or structures in question, specifically affecting the land or structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which they are located. Our response, the applicant wishes to construct additional storage space on the property. In 2012, the applicant prepared plans and received approval for the construction of similar space at the site. At this time, the additional space was to be attached to the building, but included 3,115 square feet of storage space. Due directly to the site's topography and soil conditions, presence of ledge, the cost to construct the additional space as depicted in the 2012 plans was cost prohibitive. As such, the applicant is now proposing to construct a 3,000-square-foot portion of the space in a separate building. The building is being proposed on a portion of the site where the existing grades are flatter and the earthwork required to complete the construction will be minimized. Second criteria, what substantial hardship would occur to you, financial or otherwise, if the Board of Appeals should deny your request for a variance and require literal enforcement of the ordinance, and why the hardship would be caused by circumstances you have stated in A? Our response, as referenced in Section A above, a financial hardship which is directly related to the site topography and soil conditions exists with the construction of the previously approved plans. Denial of the variance request would result in considerable cost increase for the project, which is a project that is required for the expansion of the business. See, why the relief you seek would not be detrimental to the public good. The property is owned neighborhood business and is being proposed on a lot that is already being used for a similar purpose as what is being proposed. There are no proposed changes to the curb cuts at the site, and off-site parking and loading is provided for on-site. As such, there are no direct impacts expected on traffic patterns in the vicinity of the site due to the proposed project. The proposed project will... The proposed project will provide increased tax revenue to the city through the increase in assessed value of the property. This additional revenue will be generated from the proposed non-residential use, which will not provide further impact to the town's educational expenses. As such, the increased tax revenue is expected to positively impact public good. Criteria four, why the relief you seek would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance is to promote the general health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the City of Pittsburgh, encourage the most appropriate use of land, and provide adequate light and air. And your zoning ordinance in Section 11 has 11 purposes stipulated, and I went through an analysis of each one, and I'm happy to provide those, or I'm happy to pause.
I think that's adequate to help everybody understand.
Okay.
You have mentioned, and you know we need to find certain criteria in order to consider granting a variance, especially a use variance. Can you quantify the cost increase that would be caused by building the attached structure instead of the detached structure?
I could speak to that. We're talking millions, because the attached structure, especially the one that was previously proposed, where there was storage underneath and then retail on the top, you're talking somewhere in the proximity of $2 to $3 million.
Okay.
So comparatively, you're talking maybe a fifth of that cost for the structure that we're proposing now.
Okay. So in other words, it would be five times more expensive to build the attached building...
Because of the ledge.
Which helps...
And because of the size previous to what we had originally been approved for, it would be incredibly costly, yes.
Okay. Because we do have to find substantial hardship, not just regular issues. And this is only going to be used for storage for the retail building on-site?
Correct, yes. As of right now, between ourselves, Amico Realty and Amico Flooring, and the units up above, it's already, we're busting at the seams, so we really need...
I'm glad you're doing so well.
Well, yeah, thank you. No, yeah, so we really need more storage on-site. That's the objective that we're trying to get here. That's why, again, I can justify eliminating the retail space up top, which obviously would be a nice addition to the city, but again, it's just from a cost perspective, it just, we couldn't make it work.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to help me out, the relief you're seeking is a use variance and not a dimensional variance, or is it also dimensional?
We are not requesting any dimensional variance, so yeah, it's a use variance, which I say with trepidation, because I understand use variances can be difficult. But I think this project poses a pretty unique set of circumstances, given that we're not talking about a principal use, we're talking about an accessory use, and we're talking about an accessory use that would otherwise be permissible if it was simply attached to the building. It may require a special permit, but it would be permissible nonetheless. But yes, I believe it, I'd have to say that it falls into the use variance category.
Because just from a setback perspective, is it not two feet off the property line?
Yeah, and there's actually zero, there are no requirements in the neighborhood business district for...
Thank you for clearing that up. I did not understand.
Yes, sorry. I should have mentioned that earlier.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Byrne, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I was at the property today, and it will be no impact on the city, on the neighborhood, and it would be good for the business.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Talbot, any comments or questions for the applicant?
Yeah, my questions are about the parking configuration that you're proposing. Is that not going to interfere with the garage bays?
No.
Okay.
No. Yeah, we looked at that. It's tight, but we can definitely get the turning movements to work in and out of that garage bay.
I mean, you have the four new parking spaces in front of the three garage bays.
We do have those proposed. We anticipate that they'll be utilized. It's not a retail setting, so it's not like we're going to have customers that would not be directly employed or using the facility. So we anticipate the folks that are actually employed by the...
As if you get delivery during the day, it's not a good idea to move the car.
Correct. That's correct.
And the majority of the use, again, is typically just through, you know, a standard 36-by-80 door. We don't utilize the larger door, unless we have a delivery or something like that. But most of it's just in and out with some of the smaller things, especially for the tenants up above that utilize it for storage.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Gallagher, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Assuming the flooring will be a concrete slab, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct, yeah.
Do you anticipate having to do any hammering or blasting on the ledge that's currently on the site?
Currently that's on the site, with the retaining wall, there'd probably be a little bit, because again, right now, the way that we have it proposed, we have a retaining wall with 10 feet of clearance all the way around the backside and the right side of the new proposed building. We'd probably have to do a little bit of hammering right there.
Okay.
Minimal, though. Minimal... ...project that we were discussing.
So could you estimate the square footage of what we're talking about? How big is the area?
For hammering?
Yeah.
If it's needed, it would be in this portion of the site right here.
The back corner?
Yeah, see, maybe 1,000 square feet area, 1,500.
Okay.
You know...
Well, it's minimal.
Maybe not even. I mean, the red area is 3,000 square feet, and we're talking about an area that's probably, maybe 500 square feet of the area. You know, we have done some test holes down there. I mean, it's sort of hit, when you get down to the lower part of the site, the soils improve. It's really when you get up in here...
Right.
...that they really get solid. So we think there's going to be a little bit of poking and some hammering. We'll have to knock some rock out of there, but this certainly better vises it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a tough application. We have a mixed-use neighborhood with houses right across the street, and we have a request to put an industrial building directly across the street with zero setback. Have you looked at any other alternatives? I know that you own real estate up and along the area. Any other thoughts?
As far as doing something different than what we were proposing?
Yeah.
To be honest with you, not in any other capacity, aside from essentially, again, we need, you know, we need more storage, obviously. You know, how we're operating right now with the, whether it be the Amico Flooring Building or the Elliott's Building, you know, it's not too dissimilar from what those two buildings are. Or even, again, if you go a little bit further down the line, again, you have some of the red line properties. So to answer your question, no, again, we haven't thought about doing anything different. What our need is really, is that additional storage.
No, I get it, and I'm glad you do need additional storage.
Yeah.
I'm just always sensitive to what's already there.
Right.
And we have, again, a mixed-use neighborhood...
Understood, yeah.
...with a bunch of residents. When I look at a case, I always put myself as an abutter, right? So I've got a single-family home across the street, and yeah, there's, you know, commercial buildings, and I'm looking at the back of a retaining wall, but now there's going to be this building that's probably going to be the only building on that street that's going to have zero setback, and everything else has setback. You know, I know you had mentioned planning-approved project in 2012.
With a greater setback, to be fair. You know, it had a greater setback.
You know, at that time, the setback was met. That's my thought.
Well, to be clear, if I may, I don't want to interrupt, I'm sorry.
Sure. No, please.
To be clear, this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Commissioner, but this meets your zoning setbacks. There aren't any zoning setbacks stipulated.
I know that.
So I just want to make sure. And I get that it's, we're proposing it two feet off the South Street right-of-way line. That is true. But the only other point I wanted to make was, you know, relative to other alternatives, that's one of the reasons why I presented the fact that we had, that the applicant had explored doing this in 2012 in an attached, you know, configuration. And it was a much larger building, and it would, and from the backside, the South Street side, yes, it would have been setback further from the South Street lot line, but it also would have been a two-story building, because we were, the applicant at that time was proposing the storage building, the storage portion in the basement, and then it would have had the retail space on the, so we would have expanded that, that larger footprint on the building. So I'm not sure, I, your point is completely fair. The configuration we're proposing is closer to the lot line than the previously approved project in 2012. But I'm not sure that it, you know, that it's going to look altogether that much different from the, in terms of impact visually from the neighborhood. My opinion is, you know, you're certainly welcome to take that or leave that, but I wanted to, I wanted to provide that to you.
What was the original setback versus today's?
And of course, I printed the plan, it doesn't have the actual dimension on it, but I'm going to say...
It's not listed, that's okay.
I'm going to say it's about 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you. All right, no questions at this time. Thanks.
Okay. How long, so you're going to be conducting rock hammering? How long of a period of time do you think that will be going on?
Boy. I mean, that's a loaded question, but hopefully very minimal.
Yeah.
Because the less, obviously, that we have to remove, the less expensive that it's going to be. But again, like how Greg had alluded to, again, depending on how much further we get into the rock, which again, we have no intentions of going further into the rock, the more solid that ultimately is. Right now, at the base of the, you know, of the slope, again, it's kind of a shale-y type of rock. As you get further in, it gets more solid. So I don't know if that actually answered your question.
I cannot imagine this taking more than a week to get that out. I mean, I would think a couple of days, but the amount of area that we're talking about is, you know, not maybe half the size of this room that we need to hammer. And so, you know, I think that's going to go pretty fast. I can't, I just can't, that's a guess. I'd be lying if I had told you I had an exact answer to that, but I would think less than a week, five days of hammering on a...
Always prefer that you don't lie while you're here.
Right. Certainly, it would be a question for the contractor, but I really don't think it's, I don't think it's a significant rock removal. That's our intention.
I know it's a loaded question, and you...
No, no, and I understand.
Rock hammering issue.
I understand the question. It's a, rock hammering is obtrusive, for sure.
It is. Has an arrangement been made with your tenants or any of the abutters to notify them that this work might be going on?
We've discussed with our tenants, both on the Amico Flooring side and the Elliott's Building side, we've discussed a little bit, again, that we're going to be doing a new building. To what detail, again, we haven't, you know, we haven't explained everything, but I'm sure as the weeks go on, again, we'll explain more.
Are you able to keep through to business hours, weekdays for work hours for construction?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Are you able to keep all of the construction equipment on the site, or basically not...
Yep, shouldn't be an issue keeping everything on-site. And again, even as far as utilizing the utilities, again, I think we might have a good shot of being able to utilize everything that's on-site, so I think we're in good shape there.
All right. I don't think I have any other questions. Do you have anything you'd like to say before we close the public hearing?
I don't believe so. Just want to make sure that there's none. No one else needs anything else, because I'm certainly happy to answer it or provide.
And Mr. Commissioner, anything to add?
No, I think that Mr. Roy summarized our conversation earlier today pretty well.
Okay. Thank you. Then without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. And so I'm going to say to board members, a use variance is, of course, the hardest relief that we are allowed to offer. It is intended to be rare, and, but I will say the good thing, that this is not a residential neighborhood, so that we can consider it. The ordinance does not allow us to consider a use variance in a residential neighborhood. We have certain criteria to meet, and I think the applicant did a good job of going through those criteria. I'm just going to review that when we have a use variance, there is additional criteria that we are required to find, which is that the proposed use is in the public interest, that the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed use would not create any hardship to the neighborhood, and that the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed use would not disturb the existing character of the neighborhood. And then it goes on to state that it is the intent of this section to allow use variances only in those rare cases, when the applicant, the neighborhood, and the general public equally benefit. We had no abutters appear before us, no one to make comments or voice any concerns about this project. I particularly note that were this attached to the building, this would not require a use variance. It is simply the detachment of the building that throws this from a simple expansion of the retail use into a separate accessory use as a storage facility. And that does inform, you know, my consideration here. I'm going to, before I give my comment on allowance, I'm just going to see, and we have one, two, three, four, five. So we have a full membership here, so Mr. Reynolds, as the alternate, will not be voting. Is, does anyone have an objection to the allowance of the use variance? Okay.
I'm not going to say I have an objection. I have a concern, but it really stems from what I have brought up in the past, in that when the bylaws were amended, that having zero setback allowance in this city in particular, where we have mixed use and we have homeowners that potentially could have a building put up right on their property line. But that is a topic not for this particular case, but I visually look at how it, it's, we're going to have setbacks all the way down the left side, if you're heading towards the highway, and now we're going to have a building that's just right on the street line. But again, you know, it's a visual thing. I think about the abutters in the residential portion of it. It's more of a comment than a... than me.
All right. Let's have a discussion of conditions, then. I, I'm going to say, given our past concerns with rock hammering, as are well-known to all of board members, as well as Mr. Roy, I think that, I think that in this case, what I'd like to do, because I do see that as something that's going to affect the surrounding neighborhood, I'd like the applicant to be required to provide notice to all the abutters within a 500-foot radius, seven days prior to any rock hammering, of the times that rock hammering will be conducted. And that's just to put everybody on notice that there's going to be some disturbance. I hesitate before we get into the project to putting a time limit on the time in which you can conduct rock hammering, because there's really no knowledge of how much is needed. I hope it'll be less than five days. But I think that's an unknown at this point. I would say that time limitations, as far as hours that construction would be conducted, including very specifically the rock hammering, should be limited to weekdays, nine to five. And... including very specifically the rock hammering, should be limited to weekdays, nine to five. And that, at, at least on some of the retail businesses that might surround it, will leave them without the disturbance on the weekends, where hopefully they will be conducting a good portion of their business, and the surrounding residences would be enjoying their weekends off. The construction should be according to the 2-123 Dulson Roy Plan. I didn't see any noted amendments on that plan after the original 2-123 date.
That's correct.
You're not going to be removing a substantial amount of earth from the site?
No, the rock would leave, but there's not a substantial amount.
And it would not be crushed before it's removed?
Correct. No, we don't propose any, no.
No.
No, no crushing outside.
And no blasting?
No, we're not anticipating that.
So as a condition, no rock crushing or blasting to be conducted on-site? If you find that's necessary, you're going to need to come back for a modification. Applicants shall employ dust mitigation measures during construction. Site to be kept clean of construction debris and dumpsters to be emptied regularly.
Question?
Go ahead.
The applicant, what's the height of the building?
I'm sorry, move that.
What's the height of the building?
One bay high. So I think at the, at the eve, that makes it 15 feet. And then at the apex, depending on what that slope is, I think that comes out to 16 feet.
Is there going to be any, so we have zero setback, right?
Two feet.
Two feet.
Two feet to the street, but it's more to the property line, sideline.
Okay. Can we, have you considered any landscaping to soften?
Yeah, that's another request by the planning board. So we'll, we'll be definitely preparing a plan, a more robust landscaping plan than we've included in the, in the package. So we will, we will be doing some landscaping.
Okay, so you find two feet appropriate to be able to do some plantings and stuff?
Well, we have to satisfy the planning board of that. But, but, but yeah, we, we do intend to, to landscape that strip. And also other portions, you know, so we can, we can, you know, we can use that, that section, but also around here, on that, on that slope in there. I mean, yeah, there's not a lot of, a lot of space on the property between the building and the property, because we're proposing a two-foot setback, but we are proposing landscaping, and it also is a requirement of the planning board. They've asked us to provide some more details as well.
Would you want to include a condition regarding landscape screening, or would you like to rely on incorporating the provisions of the planning board?
I have full confidence in the planning board, but, you know, from a realistic standpoint, is there any consideration to some increased setback, so there is room for landscaping?
The more that we shift the building, obviously, closer towards the existing building, the more rock that we'll have to eliminate, and then the more conditions will have to be met, again, as far as, from my understanding, as far as sprinkling the building and some of the other regulations. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's my only reservation about, about pushing the building further off the line, is that we start getting more and more into the rock, and we need at least, you know, at least 10 feet of clearance on that right side, again, if you're facing the new proposed building, we need at least 10 feet of clearance off the building. So that's my reservation. I have all the intention in the world of making it look nice. We've, between myself and my father, again, we've been at the Amico Flooring building and then the Elliott's Building for well over 25 years. You know, we've tried to maintain and keep everything nice, and whether it's mulch beds or rock beds or-
And you do.
Yeah, it's, it's always been our intention. We don't want to, we don't want it looking, we want it to look nice.
Thank you.
So.
Parking to be paved and striped?
Yes.
Yep.
Asphalt?
Yes.
Unless you want to install brick pavers or something, you're welcome to do.
Okay.
And, all right, any other conditions suggested by board members? Incorporation of this, any conditions of the site plan approval? I am going to look for, unless there's any other comment, I'm going to look for a motion in the affirmative on the allowance of the petition for the use variance with the conditions as listed, plus a review date. I think we'd want to send the review date for September. Thank you. 10th. Can I have a motion?
Make the motion on ZBA 2024-9 Amico Realty LLC, 963 Wayland Street, the variance as requested.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? You need an instantly granted.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Have a nice night.
Thank you for the hard work on this application. This is a very difficult relief for the board to grant, so I appreciate the time that you've put into making it easier for us.
Well, we appreciate the consideration, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have one.
Yeah. I'll host a seat. You're going to be just a little while. I'm pleased with you. Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm on the outer bank.
All right.
Have a nice night, everyone.
Have a good night. The next matter I'm going to call is ZBA 24-10. Christian, Christian Podehorne, and I apologize, because I believe I have-
Good enough.
-the name. 320 River Street. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181.333 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to reinstate a vacant or abandoned pre-existing non-conforming structure as a self-storage facility, to make it climate-controlled pursuant to Section 181-94, located in the AI District.
So before you open it, I think we can dispense with this application, if I may give you a brief narrative on that. We were before the planning board two weeks ago to open the site plan approval process for this. We had received a zoning determination letter from, from the building commissioner, I think it was in December of 2023, which at the time had identified that the use, as you just read, was abandoned, which would require a special permit to reinstate from your board. A second special permit from your board is all, was also required at that time due to the, the, the use being allowed only by special permit, since it's in the industrial, the IA zoning district. Subsequent to the planning board, at, at the planning board opening hearing two weeks ago, testimony by the current owner, who is with us this evening, has provided testimony that the, the building is not abandoned. So it is a use that is in existence and in force, so it is still a warehouse, storage use. It will, the proposed use would, will be unchanged, so we do not need a, it, it was our interpretation after that testimony, that we did not need the special permit from your board that we had requested. And further, after reviewing the dimension, excuse me, the use table in your ordinance, we would like to exercise our option to elect coverage of the site under the industrial zoning provisions, which allows the use by right. So it is, it is then no longer, that special permit from your board is no longer required either. So I am here tonight, I did have a discussion with, with the building commissioner on this. He did issue us a new determination letter just this afternoon, so I'm not sure if you folks have had a chance to review that. But on that premise, we would like to request a withdrawal without prejudice towards future filing, should they be required, but I do not believe we need the, either of the reliefs sought by your board.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner, anything that you would like to add?
I, I would agree with everything that Mr. Roy said. We got confirmation today that the use is not abandoned, and as a result of it not being an abandoned use, it's a continuing use, continuing non, continuing non-conforming use in the space. In addition, looking at the parking requirements, there's no additional parking requirements, even though they are planning on, on doing a lot of work to make, bring climate control into the building, increase the usable square footage inside the building, but they're not doing any expansion outside the envelope, so there's no actual change of use. And our parking table goes by gross square footage of the building, not usable square footage, so because of that, there's no shift in the parking requirements either for this. So it is non-conforming, staying non-conforming. It doesn't have to go to site plan review as well, under the planning board approval because, provisions, because they, they're not constructing a new, a new industrial building, they're working within the envelope. So because of the knowledge that it is a continuing use now, I was able to revise the zone determination to, to reflect that.
Great, sounds like a happy ending. I am just going to note, so this application was submitted on March 8th. We have a requirement to open the public hearing within 65 days. We do not need to vote on the withdrawal, as long as we have not opened the public hearing, you may withdraw by right. So if you could please ensure that before our next meeting, you give a written withdrawal.
Can I hand it to you?
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, sir. Okay. Then I am not going to open the public hearing, but we'll pass these down. And the matter is considered withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you, appreciate that very much. I apologize that I took up as much-
Do you have a copy to scan?
I apologize I took up as much agenda time as I did with it.
I'm, I'm happy you found a good resolution.
Yeah, no, it was good.
Yeah.
We appreciate the, the, there was some consultation provided, so, by the city, so we appreciate that, thank you.
No, we appreciate that too. Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to move on to the next matter. So this is ZBA 24-11, Brian Anderson, 236 Chester Street. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181.332 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, to change the non-conforming nature of the site, to create a parking area for more than 10 vehicles for use by Anderson Funeral Home pursuant to Section 181.512, located in the residential A District. Hello, sir.
Greg Roy, Dulson Roy, Civil Design Group, for the record, and I am representing Brian Anderson of Anderson Funeral Homes. Phil Jordan is, is here as a representative of the, of Anderson Funeral Home this evening. So as you read, we are here this evening to request a special permit to allow the parking that is proposed, well, existing, but some modifications that are proposed at 236 Chester Street, and I did, again, provide an easel, you do, you should have this copy in your packets as well. The funeral home is located at 316 Clarendon Street, which is this polygon here, right in the corner of, right in the corner of Clarendon Street, and I can't pronounce the name, the D Street.
Delisle.
Delisle, thank you. It's getting late. And Chester Street divides the funeral home from the proposed, from the site where the parking is located and where the modifications are proposed. There is an existing garage structure on the site, which is located on the southerly side of the, of the parking parcel, I'll call it, which is proposed to be, to remain. They would like to store the funeral home vehicles in that, in that structure. And we are proposing some modifications to the parking area to increase the number of vehicles, but to do it in a manner that would provide for better flow and circulation, particularly during times of, it would be utilized for funerals and for folks that have attended calling hours or, or funeral at the funeral home, and then would be traveling over to the cemetery for, for burial. So a little bit of an atypical parking situation than you'd see. We have some triple-stacked parking in the middle, but that's much more typical of, of these type of environments, when you have a parking attendant, the funeral home director's out directing folks, asking if they'd be attending the, the burial services and the like, and would be directing them to the appropriate parking space. So, so that area in dark gray is what we're, is the subject to this application. I did want to note that we, we also have a pending application before the planning board, well, excuse me, we do not, we will have an application to the planning board. We have too many applications before your, your board. This will require site plan approval, it will require stormwater management from the, from the city DPW department, and we do understand that, and that will be our next step, but we wanted to come before your board for the special permit process first. So we're really intending to keep the parking very similar to the way it is, just some restriping. We're going to be removing some pavement in the, in the far south, southwest corner, really just because it's redundant and it's very difficult to, to access it, and it will, it'll help particularly with stormwater management, when, once we get to that, that stages in the, in the site design. We're also proposing to consolidate the curb cuts slightly, so the, the curb cut on Delisle Street will remain as it is today, but there's a relatively unconsolidated curb cut across the entire frontage of Chester Street today. We do intend to close that off. Our experience with the, the engineering department is they will find, they will find that favorable and likely require it. So we didn't, we didn't dare propose to, to maintain that. So we'll be, you know, we'll be closing off the, the curb cut on Chester Street, which we think will consolidate traffic, provide a little bit more organization to folks coming in and out of the parking lot. We do understand that it is within the residential A zoning district, which is, is of course why we are before you this evening, because it is parking, and that requires special permit from your board. So I'm, I'm happy to take any questions or comments from, from you folks. I understand that there may be some folks in the audience too, so we're, we're happy to stop talking and turn back over to you, Madam Chair, thank you.
What is your understanding of the section under which you're seeking a special permit?
Well, that's a great question.
Because, and, and I'm going to tell you why I have the question. This is, the parking is accessory to the funeral home, which is across the street. Funeral home is pre-existing non-conforming use. There was a two-family structure on this lot that was taken down.
Yep.
That was also a pre-existing non-conforming use, because a two-family use is not allowed in RA.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Because the parking is accessory, but it's accessory to another site across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And unless we're treating this as a commercial parking lot, which we're not, correct?
Commercial in the sense that it would be like rented for space, you mean? We're not-
Well, I'm, I'm trying to look for the-
Like a use on its own. Oh, like a use on its own. No, I don't think so. I think we're considering accessory to the, to the, to the parent, to the funeral home use. use.
Yeah. And so what I'm trying to do is kind of determine the use that we're looking at on the table of uses, because parking, aside from commercial parking facility, which is number 28, under section D.
Five.
Is an accessory use to the primary use.
Yeah.
So.
Which is my interpretation of what we're, we're doing. It is a little bit of an odd case, because it is on a, yeah.
It's on a, it's separated by a street.
Yeah. It's owned by the same applicant, right?
Yeah.
It's owned by the same entity.
So I, I'll, I'll tell you, the only way that I see this is as modification of the, modification of the pre-existing nonconforming use of the, I'll tell you the two ways I see it. Modification of the pre-existing nonconforming use of the two-family dwelling on the lot that exists, modifying to another pre, another nonconforming use, and I hope you're going to illuminate me in a moment, but I'm going to finish my statement. Modification to another nonconforming but less noxious use. Or are we going to allow this as accessory to the primary use of the funeral home on the other lot, and it's allowable as an accessory use by special permit, which is what would be required for an expansion of the funeral home as a pre-existing nonconforming use? I'm going to cut to the building commissioner, because hopefully he's going to clear us up.
Let's me off the hook.
So how I initially interpreted it was the latter of the two that you just said, where it's extension of the nonconforming use of the funeral home, in order to allow, because 181.3231 allows in business districts, which I know this is not a business district, but it's extension of a nonconforming use to one that's less noxious for parking for employers, employees, customers, and other users of the business pursuant to applicable provisions. So I was, I was using the nonconforming uses in non-residential areas, which is the section he applied under, and saying that you're, you're going from a nonconforming use to, to one that's substant, that's not substantially more detrimental by going with that accessory use.
Okay.
That was my way of substantiating it.
Yeah.
Because if it were in a business district, it were, it's an allowable accessory use as a right and.
Right, but we don't, this is not requiring a variance from that provision of the zoning ordinance, right?
Correct. Which is why I'm saying, I'm thinking of this as a modification of a nonconforming use.
The nonconforming funeral home use or the nonconforming two-family use?
Originally, the nonconforming two-family use. And then I was thinking that the two may merge somehow because of common ownership, and then extending the nonconforming.
But they can't merge across the street.
Yeah, that's where the issue laid, which I guess my argument would then be, argument number one of yours, that you're converting from a nonconforming, nonconforming two-family use to a nonconforming accessory use, nonconforming accessory use where, hold on, I can, I have the answer, I just need to pull up the section. Where 181.5111 allows for off-street parking spaces required here and shall be provided either on the lot within the principal use or any other associated premises within 800 feet.
Great. Thank you. So, clearing that up, because I'm, I'm sure that was as clear as mud.
Yeah.
It's just, it's different criteria if we look at it as a special permit than if we have to look at it, vastly different than if we have to look at it as a variance. So, can you clarify for me, you, all of the dark area is going to be paved?
Correct.
And striped?
It is today, and it will be continued to be paved and striped, yes.
And striped. And are there any, have you met all dimensional requirements in the parking design?
Yes.
Okay.
We believe so. Again, we, we need to convince the planning board of that, but we, we believe so.
Do you require DPW permission for the second access?
We will need a curb, we believe we need a curb cut approval as a modification of the existing curb cut, and then also stormwater management approval from, from DPW as well.
Are you going to have the lot gated and fenced?
Typically not gated in any other location.
Okay. Is there?
That's a requirement.
Will there be any parking allowed from any other use besides the funeral home use?
No. The only people who use it are typically the funeral home staff or any of the customers or, or residents who come in to pay their respects to the families.
Okay. Will you have any other signage indicating the fact that the parking lot is intended to be used for the funeral home?
Typically, we will put in all our facilities, exit and entrance locations, so that we can control the flow, mainly because we want one standard pattern instead of head-on type of conditions.
But not a sign that says Anderson Funeral Home Parking or anything?
I don't know if the funeral home director is going to come forward for a sign permit for that at some point, but.
Okay. All right.
It's not in this plan.
Any vegetative screening provided on the lot?
We haven't gone to planning with that.
Yeah, we, we haven't gotten that far, but we will likely need some. And we are going to be creating some green space along, between Chester Street and the, and the pavement. Pardon me, I'm losing my voice. So we do anticipate doing some landscaping there. We don't have it as part of your package, but we do anticipate that to be a component.
The one caution I got on that front part, where the folks walk from the parking lot over to the existing funeral home, is the unitile was very concerned about the type of plantings we put there, to remain as low growth, because there are some utility wires there that they don't want any of our plantings to impede for the future.
There are always plantings that are lower in height.
Correct.
That I think can be used to make the site a little bit greener.
And I don't think we want to impede any vision on that road on Chester Street. The traffic moves pretty quick.
Yeah.
I don't think we want to impede any vision of any of the people who are exiting the parking lot to cross that street either.
Is there any, the two lots are under common ownership, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so we don't need an agreement for the parking use between the two lot owners? So, okay. All right. Can you, and finally, can you describe for me or for the board or the public why this use is less detrimental to the neighborhood than the prior nonconforming use? Which is the criteria we would have to contend under.
Yeah. I mean, that, that was good commentary at the beginning, because it framed the discussion here. So the, of course, I think we're all unfortunately familiar with, with funeral homes and the way they, they operate. It's a pretty quiet neighbor typically. We, you know, so the, the use there before was a two-family residential structure. Of course, didn't have the same parking on it that we're proposing, but the parking that we're proposing is, as was stated, dedicated for the use of the funeral home. It is used relatively infrequently, of course, you can't predict that. You know, you could have a string of, of several funeral, funerals within a week's time, but, but typically it's used fairly infrequently and for relatively short periods of time. You know, my sense is, you know, a two to four hour window or something like that, where you might have a packed house for a large funeral or calling hours. So to that extent, in the, in the fact that it's used relatively infrequently and as a use that's not characterized by, you know, you know, for lack of a better word, noise or rowdy behavior or any, or anything like that, it's a, it's a solemn type of use, and folks are coming to pay their respects. We expect it to be very low impact for, for the neighborhood and intermittent at that.
Okay. What's the parking capacity on the funeral home lot?
Funeral home lot, thank you. Boy, did we include that. I have to pull the plan, sorry, can't see it.
Might have.
I may have to count. Thanks, I'm hearing 20 from the back. So I, two, three, six, seven, 15. I'm actually getting 26 on this, on the funeral, on the funeral home side, if that was your question. We are actually proposing, it's not part of this application, but it is part of our planning board application when we get there, to improve the handicapped parking on the funeral home side of the, of the lot, so that, and consolidate that, so that we have a good accessible route for folks going into the facility from the parking lot. So there will be, there is some restriping proposed in that, on that side of the property. And then on this side of the property, we're proposing 52, well, I guess is it 12, 20, 27, 35, yeah, 52 spaces on the, on the new Chester Street parking area.
What's the occupancy limit on the funeral home? If it's, if you know.
I don't know. I tried to look that up in the past, and I couldn't even find it, to be honest with you.
Would you say that the current use of the funeral home frequently requires on-street parking, that you're not able to?
I've been there 25 years, and absolutely, I mean, and even the, the neighbors will attest on a busy calling hour, will be mad at the street, will be Chester Street, Delisle Street, all, all the neighboring streets get really buckled right around the building. It's more of an impact, especially in the wintertime on Clarendon Street, because it's just the traffic pattern and the snow piles. The drivers get out okay, but the passengers just have no chance.
Okay. All right. Anything else before I go to public comment?
No, oh, sorry, not for what you're asking for, sorry.
You look like you were in deep thought.
No.
I was waiting it out.
Sorry, no, I, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Is there any member of the public present today who would like to speak on or against this position? Sir, you're welcome. Please tell us your name and city of residence.
Kevin Ledger. I live on Chester Street, 206 Chester Street, about three houses down from the funeral home. We've been there for about 25, 26 years or so, so I can attest to everything he's saying. It's spot on, they need to park in. My only concern, and some of the neighbors around us, is over the last year or two, we've all of a sudden seen excess water coming through. Don't know if it's part of the parking lot problem, or if it's part of a drainage problem on Delisle Street to Chester Street. Because that parking lot has a opening on the Chester Street side that crosses the funeral home, and also on the Delisle Street, there's a, out that way also. The Delisle Street is very flat, so my concern, my only concern is water's coming down there over the, over the road, and there's no drainage down there. The only one that's there right now is on the corner, right on the corner of Chester and Delisle, on that side of Delisle, not on our side. Granted, I get water flows downhill, we're downhill, but for some reason, over the last year or so, it's gotten really bad. My yard and neighbor's yard are completely flooded now. I don't know what's happening. So that's only my concern, is that they're looking into drainage and making sure that something's going on. I don't know if it's a parking lot. I know that last year, obviously, was record-breaking waters and rains, I get it, but I had a pretty large floaty going through my yard, all the way down. So I'm just concerned about that, that's all. Definitely needs a parking lot. They've been great, fantastic. I just don't know if there can be another berm built or something on the other side, there's nothing there. So any water that flows down just goes right into the neighbors, into the woods, into the, and I don't remember it there, when there used to be a house and land. I don't know if it soaked some of it in, and that's why it wasn't an issue before? I can't answer that question. But that's my only concern right now.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
I'd like to just say a couple things.
Sir, you're welcome. Please state your name and city of residence.
Sure. My name's Ernie Jeffrey. I'm a civil engineer, and I'm a PE licensed in New Hampshire and Massachusetts.
Welcome, sir.
And I'm representing the owners of these lots. Kevin's, Kevin's one of them, number 220, 212, 206, and 198 Chester. They're all having this problem that Kevin just referred to. And in my opinion, I've done some field investigations there, it's, it's definitely surface water, concentrated, running onto a lot, house number 220, which is at the corner of Chester and Delisle. And it seems to be a result of no berm, no berm on the, it'd be on the naughtily side of Delisle Street. And if there was a berm, it would at least inhibit, stop some of the water going onto Lot 220, which also proceeds across the, sort of the middle of the backyards to these other lots, proceeding naughtily the next three lots down, the ones I first mentioned. I think it's highly likely to, during an occasional intense storm, maybe of a 10-year variety, 10-year recurrence, that water could be washing from the entrance of the funeral home parking lot over the crown of Delisle Street, opposite where the excess is. As I took some shots there, it used to be a licensed surveyor, stopped doing that like just last month, I've been doing it for over 40 years.
That's too bad, because I'd give you a job if you were still.
But I'm still a PE, like I say, in Mass and New Hampshire. But I took some shots opposite that driveway and on the center crown of the road, and seems fairly adequate, on the westerly side, opposite the apron of the driveway. It's about two and a half inches or so, should be three really. But on the other side, the Chester Street side, it's, my, my mind, pretty inadequate. It's only like an inch, and should be a lot more. So I think during an occasional storm, that might wash over and contribute to this problem going, running across the backyards. I did some, just real preliminary calculations, and I think we were talking in the order, just for the curb part, contributing mostly just from Delisle Street, probably only be in the order of almost half, half a CFS, which doesn't sound like much, but over an hour storm, that'd be 11,000 gallons. And if the, if the parking lot, the existing parking lot, actually, on funeral home parking lot, contributed, again, for a 10-year storm, I got around 40,000 gallons for one hour storm. So to sum up, I would, I would recommend the granite curb, like Kevin just referred to, along the naughtily side of Delisle Street, at least for a 180-foot stretch, and possibly a basin could be added to at the corner, the opposite corner from where the existing Anderson parking lot is. Just, I would think, I would think they could run a 12-inch pipe across, across Delisle Street to tie into that. Wouldn't be, I wouldn't think it'd be too much of an added expense for the city to do that.
Sir, can I just interrupt you for a moment?
Sure.
I want a clarification, because I, I appreciate them, because we get them very rarely, specific suggestions, modifying the plan. Are you discussing installing the granite curbing on the opposite side of the street?
Yes, yep.
So not on? So not on the lot of the applicant?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And the additional basin on the opposite corner is obviously a connection to the city's stormwater system.
Right, existing stormwater system. And there is, I might add that apparently by, I did some, procured some plans from the Public Works Department too, to pretty much know what I'm talking about here. And apparently, there's no, there's no drainage actually that runs down Chester Street, there's a sewer line, but there's no catch basins or anything like that, so.
Right.
That would, that would be helpful, I suppose, if some catch basins were added, but that doesn't really contribute to this particular problem. But I do have some pictures here that I took, starting at Delisle Street, and I could pass them out to the board if you wanted.
If you want to come in and pass them around, we'll take a look.
Yeah, I only know one said, I would suggest.
Okay.
They're all going from.
Just remember, once you hand them to us, we have to keep them for the minutes, so.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah. Pretty much labelable.
Can you point to the board members?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
What I suggested, look at them in order, this stats here in Delisle, and obviously not, but this is, the second one is the middle of the first lot, and two point of Chester right there, and there ends up, I'm looking, this is what, it's number 198, this is four lots round, you can see the residue, let's get, Kevin's not going to do the cross count, but some went out, but it's, it's good to do that.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate the comment.
Well, the only thing I would add, I would recommend for, at this point, for the board not to, not to approve the packing, nothing against the Andersons, but I wouldn't want to make a bad situation already, it's already bad, I wouldn't want to make it worse without further investigation anyways.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any other?
I just want to add a couple.
Yep, just.
My name's Laura Ledger, I'm Kevin's wife, we've owned 206 Chester Street. We've always had small buildups of water in our backyard because we're at the lowest point of Chester Street, I think. But like he said, over the last few years, after they capped that dwelling lot on the new parking lot, we've had much more excess water in our yard. I did file a C.Click fix with the DPW about three weeks ago to come out and look at it. We haven't heard, but we did, I did file a complaint with them about it.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Thank you, appreciate the comment and for coming to the meeting. Mercedes, do we have anyone online?
Okay.
Zero, okay. Let me pass those down. We have a couple of comments from the city departments. Community Development noted that if approved, site plan approval is needed from the planning board for parking. Board of Health says no concerns from the Health Department. Police and Traffic, Chief Martineau says no concerns from FPD. And from Fire, no concerns from FPD as well. Is there any increase in the impervious area due to the, under your plan, from what the existing current conditions are?
No, we're actually reducing it. Yeah.
Can you estimate percentage?
Slight modification, it's not, I don't have the percentage, but it's not a huge, it's not a big reduction. I do want to, if I could opine on some of the drainage, first of all, I very much appreciate the folks coming out, so thank you, it's been a long meeting and I appreciate it. It's America and it's democracy, so I appreciate you coming out. And I'm an engineer and I love stormwater, so I could sit here and talk about that all night, so I appreciated that too. But I think the very first thing that Phil told me when we're on site was that we need to address the water on the site. So the, I wanted to make sure that the board knows, that the applicant understands that there is an issue there. We think that there is a good, we've done some preliminary analysis, we haven't completed it, it'll be submitted as, along with the planning board process, because we felt it was more in their purview. If we're wrong on that, forgive me, we're certainly happy to present it to this board too. But the applicant sort of instructed us and gave us a baseline of that issue and instructed us to include that in our scope work. So we do have intentions of mitigating stormwater concerns on the site. As I said, we just, we didn't include it in this process because we didn't feel it was, I don't want to say under the purview of your board, but we didn't feel like it might have been within the subject matter of what you're reviewing. But we do know that it will be in the purview of the planning board when we get to that process. And we will need a stormwater permit from the, from the DPW directly in their, in their review. A lot of the, the suggestions are very good, we do see that there's a potential that the water hops the, the crown of the road in places, it just, part of that's the intensity we've been getting. But unfortunately, the intensity is the intensity, you know, intense storms seem to be a new normal for us here in the Northeast, so we are looking at those type of intense storms. All of those improvements off-site unfortunately will require approval of the DPW directly, so we can't really make any commitments to your board relative to that, but we, what we can commit to is that we would, we will certainly take it and include it in our analysis and will look to work with the city through the DPW department, in the engineering department, when we're going through those reviews. But I wanted to assure your board that we have that on our radar, stormwater analysis on the site to provide mitigation. And we appreciated the comments from the abudders.
Can we talk you into 180-foot granite curb contribution to the city?
I can't speak on that for Brian, but you can certainly make a recommendation. He's into that project pretty deep for quite a bit of money already by losing a two-family home. With that was a pretty heavy bill for asbestos-based abatement that he did not plan on, so, but you can certainly bring anything up. And as for some of the conversations about the water, we're fighting the same issue there. When we were running the electrical lines to reinstate the garage, we were hitting groundwater at six to eight inches and we had to pump everything out just to get an electrical conduit in. I don't know how to deal with the groundwater and as the engineer said, we're willing to deal with the stormwater experts of the city and try to come up with a resolve, if not something to make it better for all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to board member comments. Mr. Reynolds, any comments or questions?
No comments, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
No questions.
All right, Mr. Talbot?
Nope.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I have a question. The parking lot that we're talking about right now, where was that paved?
I'm taking a shot in the dark, it started off as parking for the residents with a basketball area, and then it got expanded to the parking to the side of the building towards Chester Street, so I'm going to say about 2,018, if that helps.
Okay.
Where the house sits is not paved currently.
Right.
It's crushed rock.
When was that demolished?
We put the final ground, I would say July through September of last year.
Okay, did it have a foundation, a basement?
Yes, it did.
It was filled in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, no further questions.
Mr. McLaughlin, any questions or comments?
I think it's a good project, it's needed residential aid.
That's right.
Would like to see some improved landscaping. And I know that, you know, that's going to be important to soften in residential aid, because we've gone from a two-family home with green space to a two-family home with, you know, all pavement.
Oh, no, no two-family home.
Right.
Just the garage.
And all pavement, so. It's basically.
And for my part, I do see this as less, less detrimental to the neighborhood than the prior two-family home. There's the comment that we won't have any additional burden on the school system, which I always think goes both ways. And, you know, I think that there is a lot of parking pressure in this area of the city and it gets exacerbated greatly at the events with the funeral home. And this is, I think, a vast improvement on that aspect. I agree that we should have some landscaping. I don't want to take over the job of the planning board, but I do want to require it to be designed within their purview and if possible, have it be sensitive to the, to the wet environment in which it finds itself, so. I certainly know that there are types of pavement which are porous and are sometimes used, but the paving lot is already, the parking lot is already paved.
It is.
I don't know that I would, at this date, have you exchange one type of parking for another, I think that would be cost prohibitive and I certainly couldn't call on you to give me an estimate on what that would be at this meeting. I don't think that would be fair. I do want to condition the special permit on seeking relief for the abudders on stormwater to any extent possible in coordination with the DPW. I can't, I do not have the authority to order you to install a granite curbing on city property across the street. And I don't have the authority to tell the DPW to do it either. But I certainly would advocate for installation of some berms where appropriate to try to redirect the stormwater into a drain system, or at least not on other people's lots, so. If there are no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing without objection. Again, Mr. Reynolds, you are, your presence is always appreciated, but your vote will not be required.
Thank you.
And any indication, does any board member have an objection to the allowance of the special permit? I don't see any. I do believe that the criteria are met, I think it's an unusual case that we would be seeking the special permit in this fashion as a modification of a pre-existing non-conforming use to one that is less of a negative impact on the neighborhood, but as an accessory use for the opposite lot. But I do think it is possible to proceed that way, given that we allow off-lot parking under 181.511. I would like for there to be a condition that this not be used as a commercial parking As stated, the applicant shall seek to mitigate any effects of stormwater on the abutting properties in coordination with the DPW and as directed by the planning board. Is there any use of the paper street? No?
No.
Okay.
Mike wants to talk to you.
Yes, sir.
If the board wishes, I would like to just put a note or condition that the planning board strongly look at perimeter landscaping due to this being residential aid.
Um, perimeter all sides, right? So we have landscaping to be provided on all sides. As appropriate for the residential neighborhood.
I think that would be a recommendation more than a condition.
Well, I would say. We can frame that as a condition and then add "as directed by the planning board" and then we're ensuring that.
I believe the rest of the board feels.
I think landscaping is an important factor.
Yeah, I agree.
Parking to be striped. And parking use to be indicated by signage. And that's an indication that the parking lot is for the use of the funeral home. And the approval, I'm going to specify again because it was confusing, the approval is for accessory use to the funeral home. Does any other board member have any suggestions on conditions? I think this is a low priority review. And so, given that, if there's agreement on that, I am not going to schedule a review date, but simply state that the applicant is subject to recall at any time by the board for compliance with the conditions. They have a motion in the affirmative, please, on this petition for special permit?
Right in the chair?
Yes.
Should it be a sunset clause?
I am tying it as an accessory use to the funeral home. So I think, I think we're good, so, and it's, and I'll look up the name, but it's Anderson Funeral Home and I'll look up the corporate name unless you know it off the top of your head.
I don't have that off the top of my head, I apologize.
I'll look up the name.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. So I don't think we need a sunset clause?
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion under ZBA 2024-11 to approve the special permit as requested with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, unanimously granted. Best of luck with you and I look forward to the improvement in the funeral home. And sir, I just wanted to say I would definitely reach out to DPW as well regarding the mitigation of the water. And of course, always, the mayor's offered, um, if not for that as well, for time travel. Is there any other thing that someone would like to bring up in miscellaneous?
Motion to adjourn?
That is an excellent motion, sir. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Goodnight to all you zonies out there.
Thank you, everybody, and goodnight.